Yeah. Let's go.
Let's go.
We will reconvene into open session. Uh, we were in executive session earlier, so now like to reconvene, the time is now five thirty. The executive session has been concluded, the participants in the executive sessions. Were myself, council members Eric Gauthell, Lynn Feiger, Dusty Kanakis, Tom Priest, Brian Rodine and Kate. And but not Kate Shavani, she was out on uh. Conflict of interest with that executive session. Also town manager Michelle Matier and town water attorney Susan Ryan. For the record, if any person who participated in the executive session. Believes that any substantial discussion of any matters not included in the motion to go into executive session occurred. During the executive session or that any improper action occurred during the executive session and violations of this open meetings law. I've asked, did you state your concerns for the record? Hearing none. We'll go back to our regular agenda and would we all please stand for the pledge of allegiance? Next, we have approval of the consent agenda. Anyone want to pull an item?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
All second.
Motion by Dusty, second by Eric, all in favor?
Aye.
Pose, we have none. And the regular agenda, we have any modifications to the.
Make a motion. I'll make a motion to approve the regular agenda.
I'll second that.
Motion by Eric, second by Dusty, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pose. Okay, next is declaration of conflicts of interest, does anyone on board have a conflict of interest with any i- item on the agenda? Hearing none, move on. And now we have the public comment section, so uh, we're all citizens are invited to address council. Uh, on any issues in the town that are not being addressed in our agenda tonight. Uh, each member is allowed a maximum of five minutes. So.
Yeah.
Do you want me to?
Uh, no, you don't need to, we'll, we'll be addressing that.
Great, okay.
Okay, the other Darrell, Darren? State your name and address, please.
My name is Darren Zalkio, the five thirty Taylor Street. Um, yeah, I just wanted to come in and talk to you guys a little bit about what's going on up in uh, Minter North, um, I see the fence have. Been erected a couple of days ago and um, got a couple of concerns, I've been learning of the new things that I wasn't aware of. Prior, um, maybe you guys aren't aware of it either, uh, we'll get into that, but. I want to do uh. First touch base with the money that we're getting for our water taps, believe we're in. We're, we're coming into some money and I would sure like that money to be spent on water. Um, only. And to be physically responsible with that, I think we really need to, to uh. You know, keep an eye on that and spend our money at the. At the water plant repairing what we have, um, just. That, that's all I got for that, but I want to. Draw a little illustration about what I experienced this morning about five AM. And I also went up there at about five PM today and experienced the same thing on Taylor. Um. With the current situation um, that I'm seeing uh, that's presenting a problem. And I'll draw that out and hopefully you guys can. Take a look at it and think about it and see what we could do to. Correct that problem. Um. So right here. We'll just, we'll just go north up this way.
Okay.
And the saloon. Is right there. You come across. And that's the road out of town. And the fence is now, here's, here's Game Creek. I have a rough sketch, but you guys got it?
We got it.
Um. And so now the fence is erected, as you know, along Minter Road, which is right here. Here are the railroad tracks. And then. Here we have uh, Taylor. And then it ends up here at the Minter lot. So the fence is now erected. To. Accommodate parking. As it was. And now the fence is along Taylor like this. And I'd uh. This is Sixth Avenue. Sixth, and that's where the trailers were, if you're familiar with that. And then we have Fourth Avenue. Right here. And from what, what I'm seeing here today at five AM. Um. I took. I took my tow truck, which is about the width of a, it's probably a little narrower than a fire truck. I took that truck. Down this way at five AM and on Taylor. You can park. East to west. That's, that's kind of how it's been, which is. Creates problems. Well, now the fence is along, let's, let's just imagine the fence being here. Okay, and there are cars parked along here now. Along that fence. And this morning, there was about. Probably, well, I went up there today at five PM and measured. Uh, there was a, there, I parked my car and there was a car against the fence. And then I took a tape measure from. The side of my car to the back of one of these cars, now it was eleven feet. So. What I'm seeing here is, is, is a serious bottleneck in here going on. And. I'm citing a safety concern. Um, that. I've talked to uh, the developers. They're, they're going to close this road, Fourth, Fourth Avenue till August of twenty-five. Okay, and then Sixth, Sixth Road, I believe is completely eliminated. So Sixth is gone, Fourth is going to be closed till August of two thousand and twenty-five. And. Due to the fact that. They're closing that, I'm wondering if you guys could reevaluate. Um, Fourth Avenue of, of having a passage through there. During construction. Due to a safety concern, that was. Um. From what I've experienced, you know, I've been watching, I've been wa- well, Taylor's been tight through here even without the fence. Now we have a serious problem. They're closing Fourth till August of twenty-five and due to the winter. I mean, when we're, when we're, when we're throwing snow up against that fence, it's going to come out another three feet. We're, we're, we're not going to have a safe situation, all, all of these people that ski the mile. Um, and all the homes, all the fire trucks are going to have to come in here and then turn back around. So that's one major concern I have about the development. And the other thing I'd uh, heard about was. At the end of the development, there. We, we requested to have eighteen spots up here for the mile. And I went down and met with um, the developer, I think his name is Jeff, not, uh, Jeff. Nice receptive guy, was down there for forty-five minutes, awesome, he showed me a few things, but in the plan, I see. The parking. All the way. From the top of the mile down to the fire hydrant, which is on Fourth Avenue. And eighteen somehow magically went to fifty-four. Fifty-four spots all the way along there, east to west. My driveway is at a pretty steep angle, when I back out of the road. They're parking east to west, I'm backing down. Creates an issue, I'm wondering if we, how, you know, if you guys were informed, how did it go from eighteen to fifty-four? Do, do we need that whole stretch? For, for the Minter Mile parking? So, that's my second concern is this, I believe that this stretch is too long. Not sure why and how that just kind of came about. I've talked to, I've talked to a few different people, I've talked to Dusty and. Um, it's just kind of, just kind of a mystery, I'm wondering if you guys know about that increase, um. So, but that's all I got and I appreciate your consideration and hopefully you guys will. Um, maybe, maybe take time to discuss that, what I drew and.
Just for clarification?
Yes, sir.
Um, so it, construction parking on Taylor is the problem right now, right, correct?
Well, the fence.
I'm not thinking about winter time, but.
Well, it's, it's just basically the residents of the area, nobody's there yet constructing. So.
So even, so the fence is what's interfering with the parking capabilities and not, not them.
I don't, I think the fences is, that's what they have to do in order to keep their construction site safe, that is the perimeter.
Right.
I think the fence is pretty legitimate, but what I'm thinking, what, what I see is. There, there is some bottleneck through here, um, I'm wondering if, if we don't. Put no parking through a, a certain section of that along the fence, but my main concern. Is closing Fourth Avenue for over a year and three months. That just uh, that's just, that creates a lot of, that, that makes me worry, that makes me worry.
Did you know?
So, I'll leave this over in the corner and.
Is that what he told you, that they're closing it for a year?
Yeah, I talked to uh, um, Mr. Earhart and um. Guy, I also talked to um. The Texas kid that they just hired, the project manager, so sorry, didn't address from the microphone, Mr. Mayor, but.
That's okay.
Lucky my voice is.
I understand your concern and we'll, we'll be checking out, we'll, we'll have a discussion with him as well. And there's ways of working around these things, so. So we're gonna work on this.
I have talked to other residents and on the street and it seemed like that Fourth Avenue closure for that long a period was. Kind of a hot topic.
Okay, well, I, that, I don't know, but we'll, we'll, we'll talk.
Either way, that's great, thank you, sir.
You bet, thank you, Darren. Okay, is there anyone else would like to address the board?
Okay.
Mayor Earl, would just be a chance to discuss our little building project at cemetery or is that later?
Uh, that's later.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, uh.
Jay, is there anybody on, online that wants to make a comment?
No, sir, there is not.
Okay, thank you. Next is council comments, we're in committee reports. Uh, Tom, you got any comments you want to make?
No, just to follow up to that, we'll just have to discuss, some of the Taylor residents are going to have to change their parking habits because they're nosing in as opposed to parallel along that stretch. That just isn't going to float anymore.
Uh, Brian, sorry, I didn't see you over there, you got any? Okay, Kate?
I have any either.
Yeah, Eric?
No updates at this time.
Okay, so I was. I'm sorry, Lynn, do you have anything?
I'm good too.
Okay, so I was at the um. See, at the EBT a meeting, extra meeting, and we had. Approved the um. Uh, a ten-year transit development and capital plan for the. Uh, party, for the regional transit authority. Uh, it was a big commitment, uh, and it will take an entire year to get that done, uh, but it's, it's. It's going to be a hell of a process because it's, it's really looking at. We are, our board is going to get educated on what we have to do, we're going to get all the data for it. Uh, and, and moving forward, how you can uh. How you can make sure you've seen all of the problems and all the work that needs to be done to make sure that when we're at the end of the line of the ten years, we are. Extremely productive and efficient uh, system going. That doesn't mean we're not going to be before then, but this helps us in an organized way to get to the best that we can be. Um, our team understands that the study will likely need to address things like how to balance and determine ideal transit service levels locally and regionally. Uh, ridership demand and growth, fleet needs and impact on route operations and maintenance needs. Infrastructure needs and associated capital project costs. Speed and reliability of transit, transit operations, especially relative to new bus stops and or service requests. Land use patterns and growth predictions, creation of solutions for recruiting and retaining bus operators in the new RTA. How to integrate transit with other trans- transportation mode, modes. And partnership and coordination with our transit providers. So we'll be kicking this off in June, um, we have, we uh, approved the contract with the fair and peers. Uh, who did our community plan, I believe, um. And they're going to form a project management team, um, that includes the. Regional Transit Board, a technical advisory committee made up of transit professionals, staff and elected officials from communities with the service, within the service area. And other key transit transportation community representatives. Also, key stakeholders will be part of this process, including local community partners such as businesses, nonprofits. Regional partners, C dot, and our state and federal representatives. Uh, and most importantly, our community at large will be. Uh, will be included on, also within the current eco-transit delivery area, which includes gypsum and so forth as well. So it's going to be quite, quite an extensive process. Uh, the deliverables include an internal comprehensive ten-year transit development and capital plan. For the, for board review and revision, and then after that revision, if, if there is any. We would have a, we would issue the public facing comprehensive ten-year transit development and capital plan. And uh, that'll be released to the public, uh, and we'll have that open for comment from our, from our public so that we can get input that we need. Then the final comprehensive uh, ten-year transit and development capital plan will be done, followed by graphic rich exit, executive summary, so that's when it'll all come together. And then the work begins, so. I was pretty excited about that whole process and uh, I think we're going to be. Uh, and I think everyone's going to be happy with us as we move forward. And that's all I got. I was just asking if anybody seen any bears yet, they're out, so. Keep in mind, keep your train, uh, keep your trash secure, all those kinds of things, so. Uh, with that. There's no more comment, uh, we'll move on. Uh, next to Adam, I have a staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, my uh, staff report is in the packet and if anyone has any questions, I'm happy to address them.
Any questions for Michelle on her report?
The signboard for.
Yes, I'm told that they will have a variable messaging board that will go out uh, near the project to give updates and they will also. Uh, they have just started a website, uh, you're talking about the Minter North project on Taylor and Minter Road. And they have just started a website, we've shared their link on the town's uh, homepage.
Okay.
Of our website, and we expect that eventually there will be a phone number or email for contacting uh, with comments and feedback as well.
I would encourage them to be detailed on that website, it's currently, it's, I know it just was started, but it's just like a sentence, it says like, put up fence.
So.
We got that today.
Any, yeah.
I'm going to tell it to Darren.
Well, I mean, if they're closing. If they're closing Fourth Street, then like, all of the mile traffic coming in through that side doesn't. Really make a lot of sense. To come in Minter Road, just to come all the way around to like. I don't know if it's better or worse for all of that to be going through town or for it just to be detouring. Along the Taylor Street. I'll bring that up, it might both be bad, but one, one should be less bad and whatever that is, we should advertise.
Maybe they could do a pa- a path along where they're going to close off Sixth. Keep a trail open there for me to get down.
Open, it's going to be all like all people.
Of course, we have all that.
Driving in.
Yeah.
The parking is really for very short cars only, if you have a truck, you're going to be in the road.
Okay. Thank you, Madison, she secured us a twenty-five thousand dollar grant, good job.
Yeah.
Other than that, we're working hard with all entities in the county to get Westvale. Passwork at C dot's cut back on the most important features of that whole project. Um, which was the Narrows and what was the other one?
The Narrows was the primary concern.
The Narrows, which gives us, they were going to put an auxiliary road there. Uh, which would keep traffic moving even when they have actionists up there and they had spotted those as the most important things that they needed to get done and now they've decided the budget isn't there anymore. So they're going to do everything but that. Um, anyway, just, we're working hard on that and so is everybody else in the county, uh, to try to get that fixed. Um, okay, so no, no other questions for Michelle? On to those special presentations. Okay, uh, we're up to business items, ordinance number five, series twenty twenty-four, second reading, an ordinance approving Battle of the North. Development agreement.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, so unfortunately Mike Sawyer is unable to be with us this evening, but given that there were. Uh, no comments or feedback from the first reading, uh, and we do have Battle Mountain representatives online with us this evening, should you have questions for them. We do still feel comfortable with moving forward with approval of the public hearing uh, for second reading. So this is the development agreement for vested property rights for the Battle North. Developments, this is in conjunction with uh, the steps that we identified we would be taking as part of the diligence process, we have followed the public steps. Uh, for a development agreement, and if anyone has any questions for. Uh, Battle North Representatives, Lindsay and Muncie are on the line.
Okay. That sounds good, I'm going to pull up all my notes, go, I wouldn't actually do that, but, okay, so does anyone at this point have any further questions for Battle Mountain?
I, I have one question.
Yes, Lynn?
Um, so reading this ordinance, what happens to this if the Battle Mountain agreement falls through? Um, will the vested rights here have been changed permanently?
No, so Lynn, all of the approvals that council has been conducting to date, none of them have been recorded. To, to this moment in time, so everything is being held until final approvals are achieved before everything is recorded.
Okay, so this won't be recorded until after we have a final agreement?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. Because I didn't see that within the body of the agreement.
I believe it is in the, and, and I can't be caught in this, I believe it's in the settlement agreement, which is, was the resolution from September of last year.
Um, Ryan, you got anything?
Nothing more than.
Okay. Tom, any questions for Battle Mountain?
Nothing.
Nothing.
Hang on, I got some. Maybe I don't. Yeah, it's all right, I'll, we're just going to be continuing, so I didn't bring my notes. Get one more try here.
You, you are welcome to continue if you choose, you're welcome to continue if you choose, just given that there were no questions for your hearing.
In the next time. Give me just a minute more. You want to play some music or something? Yes, uh, one thing that I was running into was. Um. The cost of the service plan. That's what I should do, I'm looking at the agreement, not the service plan.
I think we're on the agreement. Um, so, Mr. Mayor, we're just on the development agreement right now.
Yeah.
The service plan will be the next.
Go ahead and move on and um. Uh, yes, so we go ahead and vote on this and then we'll get to the service. Yes, you're right, Susan. Hey, opening the hearing for the public, is there any questions on the Battle Mountain settlement agreement? Jay, do we have anybody online?
No, sir, we have no one with their hand up.
Okay. With that, I'll close the public hearing. And there's no questions, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number five, series twenty twenty-four. An ordinance approving the development and vested property rights agreement, implementing the Bolts Lake Settlement Agreement on second reading.
Second, motion by Dusty, a second by Tom, roll call please.
Ryan, aye.
Tom, aye.
Aye.
Dusty, aye.
Eric, aye.
Earl, aye.
Lynn, aye.
Okay. We have that, so everyone's knows this doesn't get finalized until we're done with our due diligence, so. This is the approval of the agreement of the, and but that's it, so for now. Um, next we have resolution sixteen, series twenty twenty-four, a resolution approving the Battle North Service Plan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, this is the agenda item that staff is requesting a continuance on, Jim Mann, our financial advisor is reviewing. Battle Mountain's comments back to him and will be preparing a memo uh, for council. In order to fully address those reasons, uh, since we do not have those prepared for tonight and we want to make sure that they're thorough in nature, uh, we do request a continuance.
Good.
And typically, we continue to adate certain on matters, on business matters. So unfortunately, Jim Mann isn't able to be with us on May fifteenth, as he will be out of the country, however, I am hopeful that Mike Sawyer will be with us and that we can continue the conversation. At that time, having the full list of Jim Mann's comments in the memo.
Um, any questions? All right. Nothing. Okay. Anyone else, no more questions? Find this. That didn't come through, okay. Whoops. No. Okay, um, so we can take a motion for a continuance, if that's.
I'll make the motion to continue, resolution number sixteen, series twenty twenty-four, resolution of the Town Council, the town of Minter, approving the. Consolidated Service Plan for Battle North Metropolitan Districts, uh, one through four and continue to May fifteenth meeting.
Ten seconds.
Motion by Dusty, second by Kate, all in favor?
Aye.
Pose. That will be continued to the next meeting?
May fifteenth, thank you.
Fifteenth, okay. Okay, next we have ordinance number six. Okay, next we have ordinance number six, series twenty twenty-four, second reading, an ordinance amending the nuisance code relating to wildlife.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So this is second reading, uh, to amend Mintern's nuisance code. In response to ensuring that the town is doing everything that we can to protect our local wildlife. Uh, there was some conversation at the first hearing about uh, ensuring that we're able to properly enforce our code. When hazards to wildlife exist and our current code identifies human risks. But we want to ensure wildlife are included in that. Uh, I am taking an excerpt from Attorney Rob Marsh's memo. It says. The proposed amendments clarify and strengthen the town's ability to require removal or abatement of hazardous conditions to protect. The health, safety and general welfare of its residents and visitors. And eliminate the demonstrable risks of wildlife injuries or fatalities. Consistent amendments to the town's fencing regulations are simultaneously proposed under separate cover. So our next. Agenda item will be for the fence code, but so this is to uh, enforce uh, the value of wildlife in Mintern and their safety. And gives us more backing to enforce that section of the nuisance code.
Thank you, Michelle. Uh, this is second reading and there were no changes from the first reading.
There were not.
And so unless there's any further questions, we can go ahead and. Open it up to the public hearing. Uh, at this point, we'd like to have anyone who would would address the ordinance for. The the new nuisance or nuisance uh, ordinance revision. Hearing none, we close it. Uh, Jay, you got anybody out there?
Mr. There was no one in the audience with their hand raised.
Thank you. Okay. We have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the Town of Mintern ordinance number zero six, series twenty twenty-four, ordinance of the Town of Mintern, Colorado. Amending chapter seven, article two. Of the Mintern Municipal Code prohibit nuisances which harm wildlife, second reading.
I'll second that.
Motion by Tom, second by Dusty. Roll call, please.
Brian, I.
I'm I.
Kate, I.
Dusty, I.
Eric, I.
Earl, I.
Lynn, I.
Okay. Uh, next is ordinance number seven, series twenty twenty-four, second reading, an ordinance amending the fence code.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So as we, or as I uh, just identified, this is in conjunction with the Wildlife Code. To allow the town to further uh, value and. Protect local wildlife as it pertains to fencing in the community. Uh, so this uh, amendment to the Article eight, Public Peace Order and Safety. Uh, hazardous fencing and improvements. Section subsection ten eight two eighty has been amended to now include the construction or maintenance of fencing or other improvements to property. That create a demonstrable risk of injury to or fatalities of wildlife. And or a hazardous, a hazard to health or safety of the public are hereby declared to be nuisances. It goes on to identify that allowing such fences to remain on property is also. Uh, identified in the code. So with this, nothing is retroactive in this code uh, revision. However, moving forward again, like the nuisance code, it gives the town more of an ability to enforce our code. And what the community and the council have identified is a significant value to wildlife.
Thank you, Michelle. And once again, there were no changes from first reading or second. And I'll open it up for public hearing. Have any uh, one wishes to comment on this new revision? Uh, with the addition of the fence code. Jay?
There's nobody in the audience.
If no further comments from council, we'll take a motion.
Make a motion to Town of Mintern Ordinance Number zero seven, series twenty twenty-four, ordinance of the Town of Mintern, Colorado. Amending chapter ten, article eight of the Mintern Municipal Code. To revise the section prohibiting certain fencing in the town, second reading.
Three seconds.
Okay, motion by Tom, second by Kate. Roll call, please.
Brian, I.
Dusty, I.
Eric, I.
Earl, I.
Lynn, I.
Next we have ordinance number eight, series twenty twenty-four, second reading, and ordinance submitting the chapter eight of the Mintern Municipal Code for Civil Infractions.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So yes, second reading of civil infractions amendment to identify. That whenever possible, court hearings of a jury nature are moved to the county court. Uh, for the ability to uh, fully function a jury trial. Uh, in the event that one is requested at the Mintern Court. So there are still situations where Mintern is required to have uh, trials. Uh, in uh, our municipal court. However, whenever possible, we will want to see those go to county court. Uh, as our bandwidth is incredibly limited. And this had no questions on first reading.
And with that, do we have any questions from Michelle or anything on this? Okay, we'll open it up to public. More than have comments on our new municipal, so new municipal code addition. Okay. Jay?
I'm sure there's nobody with their hand raised.
And now we're off to. No changes once again from first to second reading.
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number eight, series twenty twenty-four, an ordinance of the Town of Mintern, Colorado. Clarifying that violations of its municipal code are civil infractions.
I'll second that.
Motion by Eric, second by Dusty. Roll call, please.
Brian, I.
Dusty, I.
Eric, I.
Earl, I.
Lynn, I.
You? Next we have Resolution twenty, series twenty twenty-four, appointing and planning commissioner meeting. Since Tom was elected on, you know, the council, we have another vacancy. And so this is here to fill it. And uh, so uh, before we move forward, uh, you know, we did have uh, a selection uh, at the lab. And um, anyway, you know, Darrell ended up being the uh. Alternate there. So. The council can either promote the alternate to the board and then this would be an election for the uh, appointment for. Uh, the alternate position, or we can have an appointment based on all three. Going up. So is I'd like to see a thumbs up or down on. On that, uh, there's people that would want to see Darrell as the alternate appointed. Uh, to planning commission and then the next two, uh, then the next deployment being on the alternate. And so I would vote for anyone wanting to put Darrell on the board uh, now. Okay, well, that's a good point. So uh, Eric makes a point that he'd like to hear uh, the other two. We've already had Darrell give his. Say, but he may just say again, then we'll make that decision. Okay? So let's look forward on that. So we have uh, Eric Ripith and Tracy Anderson here. Uh, to uh, apply for the positions uh, as available. Um, so we'll take turns uh, answering, asking questions and uh, and then we'll move forward from there.
Mr. Mayor, may I, may I make a statement? I'm Tracy.
Yeah, yeah, you, okay, yeah. Do you have something to say before we start?
Yes.
Okay, please do.
Hi, everybody. Um, my name is Tracy Anderson. I'm at ten sixteen Mountain Drive. I uh, I did apply uh, for this position. However, I. I value your time very much and I I don't want to spin your wheels, so. I'd like to say that um, when I applied, I um, inquired as to whether I could fill a vacancy per year. And and stay on a Historic Preservation Commission, which I'm um, a member of. And I actually have. I was reelected to that, so I have quite a substantial term in front of me. That said, I was a bit concerned that I thought maybe no one else would apply. And I thought maybe I could just fill. You know, if I was the only one, I might be able to just fill the term. That said, I I just don't want to waste your time. So I just want to say, and I said it in my, in my letter there, that um. If I understand that um, when I, well, let me back up. I was told that there was no ordinance that said. You couldn't be on both, but it makes sense to me that you wouldn't necessarily want a person on two commissions. I understand that. It makes sense to me in that. You might have very few people leading the town if that were the case. So I just want to say before all this gets started that. Um, I'm willing to take back my um. Application because I I would prefer to, if there, if I have to make a choice, I'd prefer to stay where I am. As I really enjoy it. And um, I. You know, I was really kind of thinking that if no one else applied, maybe I could just. Fill in for for a year, but. I can let you guys discuss that or, or you know, um, so. Any questions?
So you just will go ahead and retract then at this point?
Um, yeah, because I I mean, unless you you would allow a person to be on two commissions, but I'm thinking that. While I I'm not aware of a, something that explicitly says that you can't, um, I would understand that you you wouldn't want that.
Well, um, I think that's really just your decision to make. Uh, I think. It is better to, I mean, the more voices we have involved with our town is always a good thing. Uh, because the more we have. Uh, that are involved, that means their circle of people are then more well-informed on on our government. So I guess that's that's what I would feel.
And I I understand that.
Anybody else have any thoughts on that before we move forward?
I think the two should be separate. For obvious reasons of roles and responsibilities between P and Z and the story.
I felt same way too. I brought it up meetings ago. It was kind of thin sun, we'd be on both when you applied last time and.
Yeah.
Didn't know how that would work.
Right.
And I I certainly understand that. And the reason I wanted to get in front of it was I I don't want to. Spin your wheels. I, you're busy people and.
Okay. Well, I appreciate that, Tracy. I appreciate you thinking that out, so.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks for all your work on the Historical Preservation Committee too. Thank you.
Pleasure. Thank you.
Um, Eric, if you like, stand up and uh, just any, any words you want to say before, and we'll go through a little question and answer and you'll go forth from there.
Okay, uh, my name's Eric Ripith. I am a resident of Mintern for the last six years. I live in Malloy Park. Um, I feel like uh, the residents of Malloy Park may not have as much of. Like say or representative, uh, when it comes to the town of Mintern, um, I really kind of, I'm a. Teacher for the last twenty-four years. I teach at the SSA. I've been teaching there for the last nine years. Um, I've been a teacher for twenty-four years. Uh, before that, I was a. Geography uh, major and I used to be a mapmaker, working with GIS and stuff. So I know about planning and zoning. And I just really want to be part of the. Uh, town itself and be a representative and uh, just kind of express my views and just have a representative for. Everybody out there who lives in that kind of, that part of midterm that just doesn't really have a say. So yeah, any questions or anything like that?
Okay, so. Uh, Brian, do you have some questions?
Um, not specifically, I think. Yeah, do we? I guess more just.
I don't think we need to question Darrell yet. I think he went through it, but uh, so any questions you would have to see.
Ballot still, is that what our thumbs up or what are we doing? Because it seems like.
Well, that's, thank you, Brian. Um, let's see, does does everyone have their?
Yeah.
I think we should still ask questions just so that we understand where Eric is sitting. Even though he may end up there no matter what, so. Uh, so let's.
I think that's a guarantee.
I'm sorry, often, I just like to understand now why, why, okay, I I completely understand you want to represent uh, that neighborhood. Because they don't have representation right now. Uh, but what are your feelings? What do you want to get done on the planning commission that uh?
Well, I feel like the midterms right now just on kind of a edge of a lot of growth, you know, I mean, a lot of things are happening with the city itself. And I think that uh. We need some responsible kind of like action or responsible to say about what's happening and. Before things could be out of control. So I think that just uh. Being part of that area out there and just having a say and being able to uh. Have some kind of a. Like ideas about like what should be happening in midterm. I've been living here for six years, like I said, and I love this. Uh, I've been. Since I moved here, I have two sons, have a family here and uh, just love this town. I just want to be a part of it. I teach government. I teach US history and. Geography and uh, just kind of want to be part of the politics and I think this is a good start. Being part of the town itself.
Okay. So what is, what do you see? Because we always want to have people uh, on planning in particular. Along with a long-term vision of how that you'd like to see the town in ten or years and twenty years and so forth. Um, to give you, have any thoughts on that?
Well, I just feel like this town has like a, like a personality, if you will. And I don't want to see that personality kind of turn into another. You know, suburb of bail, if you will, because I feel like we have our own entity here. And I think it's really an important job. We keep that. Um, and I think midterm is just, you know, like I said, a real special place. I just. Really want to make sure that it stays that way. I know that growth has to happen, but I just want to make sure that's responsible and that. You kind of take steps in the growth itself and just not have it all come at once and see, kind of like have things happen and see how it. Turns out and then maybe take other steps.
Okay.
And make sure things are following like planning zoning laws and stuff like that and make sure everything just falls in order.
Okay. Eric? Good.
Not good too.
Okay.
Uh, the only question would be just due to the change of. You were applying to be a primary with the possibility of being the alternate. One, you understand what that is? And two, are you okay with that?
Yeah, I'm okay with the time commitments, what every Wednesday, Friday or. Twice a month or whatever, yep. I'm here to be here and to be a voice.
Okay.
Oh, yeah.
Any other questions for Eric? Okay, so uh, back to council, um, do you want the alternate to be automatically promoted or?
I'm okay with promoting the alternate and then putting Eric on as the alternate.
Okay, thumbs up. And I want to have a majority of people wants to vote.
We have ballots for you to fill out.
It's always a, it's it's up to us to decide whether you can be alternate or so automatic in. Uh, we've done, well, I think we've. I think I I've been here a long time, but I'm trying to think back on these, you know, I don't know that we've, we only started using alternates a few years ago.
Yes, but you have done it both ways. Where you have, where you have promoted the alternate and you've also done it where you've just uh, appointed a new position. To the planning commission director.
So if you just want to do a ballot for who's going to be the primary and that solves the problem.
If that's necessary, we can. It looks like council may not need ballots for this, in which case we could avoid the confusion of the paper. Any hanging chats.
Oh, there's chat.
Okay, so that's just, okay, people that want to just go ahead and promote the alternate, thumbs up.
I.
Is that a thumbs up? Okay, thank you. So I had three thumbs, four thumbs. So there's no need for uh. Eric, congratulations, you're alternate in the planning commission.
Okay.
You are invited and you will have input into the process. You won't be able to vote unless one of the members is not in.
Okay.
That's the way that works. Don't mind your full time, man.
If I may.
Yes, thank you.
All right, thank you all.
Thank you.
If I may clarify, um, with Darrell being promoted to the full time and essentially taking over the rest of the term. Uh, he, it is my assumption that he will no longer be having the full two, two-year term. He will just be fulfilling. The remainder of Tom's term and Eric will be taking over um, the full two-year alternate term as was appointed. Two meetings ago.
Understood.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, um, so with that, we'll move on.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, if I may, there is a resolution that you do need to pass. Um, and then you would want to swear him in.
Yes, I do have to have a formal vote on it. Uh, Resolution twenty, series twenty four, appointing a planning commission member and alternate. Uh, we'll have a motion on that.
Make a motion to approve Town of Mintern Resolution number twenty, series twenty. Make a motion to approve town of midterm resolution number twenty, series twenty-two-four. Resolution appointing a planning commissioner town of interim calling.
Here we are.
Okay, I'm gonna second by Kate, uh, and this is voting in Daryl as the. As the commissioner and Eric as the alternate. All in favor?
I, I.
Hi.
Oppose?
Okay.
Is that swearing in things?
Yes, it is.
Alright. You have originals. And let's see, I guess, I guess he's automatic, you know, I mean. So just repeat after naming it. Hi.
Hi, Eric Ribeth.
You solemnly swear that I will support the constitution and laws of the United States.
Solemn swear that is.
Constitution.
Constitution and the laws of the United States.
The constitution and the laws of the state of Colorado.
Constitution laws of the state of Colorado.
And the ordinances of the town of midterm.
The ordinances of the town of midterm.
That I will faithfully perform all duties.
I'll faithfully, uh, perform all duties.
Of the office of a midterm planning commission member.
Repeat that one, sorry.
Of the office of midterm planning commission member.
Of the office of midterm planning commission.
On which I am about to enter.
Which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
You bet.
Thanks.
You sign this as your leader and then give it back to Matt.
Okay.
Okay. Anything else I forgot? Just making sure. Okay. Next, we have. Uh, one sixty-one Main Street, a request for an exemption from section sixteen, seventeen. Ash one-ten underground utilities in the one hundred block. So in the past, we've had, uh, this regulation that any new. Lines being pulled into the one hundred block have to be buried. Um, and I'm glad Michelle will take the details over from here.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, but actually, uh, Madison is gonna head this up for us. She has been helping the applicants. Through this process with their temporary shed for the one hundred block and, and this is kind of a perfect example of why a. Uh, request for a variance may be worthwhile.
So as I'm sure, uh, all of you have noticed, there is a shed going up at one sixty-one Main. That was a. A base shed at one sixty-one Main. That is going up, uh, due to a limited, yeah, use review that was approved by the planning director. Um, that was approved, uh, uh, for a year with the ability to extend, uh, for up to one more year. Um, and at that point, it will be required to take, be taken down. Uh, the shed is, uh, being used as a stopgap while, uh, the applicant, uh. Spence, who is here and his representative Robert work on developing plans, uh, for the permanent structure that will be going there. Uh, and due to its temporary nature and the fact that it is much smaller than what is likely to be there permanently. Uh, digging underground, uh, all the way up to that shed, uh. Does not quite make, uh, a, a ton of sense when they will have to likely rip all that out. Uh, in order to install the foundation of the permanent structure when they get to that point. Uh, so they are here tonight, um, to request exemption from section sixteen, seventeen, one-ten. Uh, much like you, y'all have handled in the past, uh, with, you know, the saloon and ten forty-one Main. Um, just as examples, uh, there's existing power on a pole right behind the lot. Um, and so there will not, they should not be visually obstructing anymore than what is already there. Uh, but the applicant is there if he would like to ask questions.
Okay.
And this exemption is temporary?
This exemption is temporary. It will come down, uh, with the shed when the shed permit expires.
It's right in the stars. They'll do the digging to undergrounded from there.
Yes.
Okay. Um, any questions from the board? Sounds pretty straightforward, right? Um, if the applicant's here or representative, you're welcome to come up and. Say what you wanna say, if you wanna say anything.
I have no more questions. Spence, New Power, one sixty-one Main Street.
So Spence, I, uh, so the shed is for like just getting everything in there to, that you might need.
It's gonna be a temporary tasting room.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. And, um, so I understood you were gonna, you create a little area for bikers, uh. For cyclists.
We can certainly put in some bike routes. I believe we talked with the town about a twenty by twenty, like. Another shed, but I believe that's being moved somewhere else.
We're, we're exploring options right now and the applicant wanted to get through this process first, not knowing that they would get. You know, approvals to do what they wanted to do. So we're, we're keeping all of our options open.
Okay.
And we wanna leave a lot of room for the, the market stuff as well. We'll be putting the climbing wall in the bouncy house on the rest of that property as well.
Yeah.
They wouldn't let me in while I wanted to bounce, huh? Yeah, you can really send little kids flying and listen, I get it.
Well, now it's on our properties. We'll make sure they leave.
Well, that might have to be a liability. It'd be a mess.
Okay, um, with that, uh, is there any other questions? Uh, the architect, Robert Creasy is here as well. I can't wait. Oh, I, I don't know. You probably heard me. I was telling Robert, I gotta look over his shoulder for a while. I'm excited about that. Um, okay, so with that, uh.
For the shed?
So we're looking at a variance procedure then?
The distillery?
We're looking at a variance procedure?
This is gonna be.
I.
We just need you to approve the resolution.
You're looking for direction. Okay.
Resolution, I think.
Yeah, I think a motion approved, but I can't find the resolution what they took.
I'll make a motion to approve town of midterm resolution number seventeen, series twenty-two-four. A resolution approving design review to construct the structure. Sorry, wrong one. Yeah, there's no, it just.
Yeah. So just make a motion to approve or deny. Motion to approve or deny.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay. Uh, motion by second, uh, by Erica, second by Kate. All in favor?
I, I.
I oppose? All right. Let that air, air power fly. Okay, next we have. Okay, resolution seventeen, series twenty-two-four, a resolution approving a new men, uh, new maintenance and storage building. With wildlife conditions.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So this was on consent agenda. If my memory recalls. In March?
That's right.
February. This was on the consent agenda in February and the council pulled it up for the purpose of considering, uh, wildlife impacts to the area. Given the geographic location of the shed. I'm not aware of there being any concern about the, the D R B. Uh, itself with the shed construct, uh, design. Uh, so with that staff connected with, uh, Colorado Parks and Wildlife District Manager Devon Duval. Who submitted a recommendation for dates. Uh, open dates for construction that is in the memo in the packet. And we have created a resolution identifying that construction limitations due to. Uh, wildlife, uh, habitat is in allegiance with the strategic plan and the community plan. And that is identified in the resolution. So if there are extensive comments or questions on this resolution. I might recommend that we continue this until a time that Mike Sawyer can be here. Uh, so I'll, I will leave that to all of you. But this was called up by council.
Okay, um. Let's start with a little question and answer thing, uh, so that we can kind of get ahead of the game and then we can continue if we decide we need to. You know, unless you are concerned about legal commitments and so.
I will do my best.
Okay. Um, the, any questions for Michelle at, at this point?
I, I just had a note, um. The, I, I went and looked up the midterm bike park construction windows.
Yes.
Um, and I believe that's, that. Was probably there doing it. I think it was May fifteenth and it has been ever since, right?
That sounds, that sounds familiar to me as well.
When we allow crews to get in there and start moving dirt and working on things?
I believe that would be correct.
Okay.
And, and I believe the dates probably change each year, but I would believe it's, it's very close to that timeframe each year.
Okay.
Yeah, mid-May.
Yeah. Um.
It's usually a little weather dependent, but has not been considered wildlife to my knowledge.
Uh, I think that that is what, I mean, um, I should, we should check on this.
Based on some of the trail closures.
Yeah.
Um, so that might play into that as well.
And those, as those, the forest service closures?
Two elk trail closure is, I believe, what the mini mile follows for the trail closures on the mini mile.
And when is that? What's the date on the mini mile and for the gut range?
It's the same as in, in this resolution.
Um, you know, it's, it's made sixth, the June thirtieth inclusive, I believe.
June twenty-second to November twenty-third.
Yeah, I don't have the two elk closure and open dates off the top of my head.
What's, what's the point of this? I mean, the resolution.
Well, so.
June twenty-second.
Well, yeah, so my, my point was it's adjacent and it seems like we should just have those dates line up across all of those.
That was my.
Crocs over there and not like make it.
The other one I was gonna bring up, cause it's same, uh, I would doubt her is mentor north. I know we set a date for them for their construction window. Do you remember what that was?
I'm not aware of us setting a date.
I thought we had a date, but they were kind of worrying about the time that they had to work on it.
Uh, I'm not as, I'm not aware of us setting dates for construction windows on midterm.
So then the place that's over there on Taylor doesn't have a date new that's been building for the last few months?
No individual homes as of yet have ever been given construction windows that I'm aware of.
Okay, he, here's what, uh, the forest service, the CPW man has said, said. These closure dates are consistent with Forest Service seasonal wildlife closures in the area. Now, the reason that this is more perhaps a small and narrow window for construction than anywhere else. Is because that is the most sensitive part of elk habitat in our, in, in, in our midterm valley. Uh, if there's ever gonna be any need for additional restraints. I would, uh, I mean, i- any other area, I don't know. That there would be more open stuff, right? But all the trails in this area are closed because of elk, elk habitat and caving in the spring. And also, um, I suspect. That we're gonna, um, well, this whole ridge line, I believe is, is there. Do, do they close, uh, they don't close Cougar Ridge, don't they?
Uh, I'm not aware of Cougar Ridge closing, but we did have to agree on the ECO trail to close that during the winter as well.
Mm-hmm, okay. So.
Two Oak Trail closes May sixth to June thirtieth inclusive. But for the forest service. What's that?
I'm sorry, say that again.
The Two Elk Trail, that I think is, it's out right there. Is there elk closure at trail number, uh, two elk, two thousand and five? It's May sixth to June thirtieth.
Honestly, we're running a batch plant out of there. We got the bike park going. I don't see any more, um. Stress on the elk with building a building there. I mean.
I may offer some information from the Trails Alliance, um. I, sure. Hi, my name is Robert Creasy, uh, for the Green Pine Street. Um, if I'm in the Trails Alliance, uh. The mini mile closes December first, May first, and then two elk does have the closure that, um. Councilwoman Kate Chafani was, was mentioning the May sixth to the June second. I think that's because two elk goes all the way up into the, the back bowls.
That's right.
It's not because of what's happening in midterm.
Yeah, that doesn't take effect until about a mile and a half up the trail.
So, so, so using two elk would be not appropriate for that location. The mini mile closure view that, like, Brian was recommending makes the most sense.
Okay, is that, okay, so. I think this is for a reading. So we can refer to.
Evolution.
So we, we can refer to, we can get back in touch with Devon of all of from the Colorado Parks and Wildlife. Uh, with his statement he's got here about, uh, being consistent with other area closure, area closures in the area. Uh, so we can, uh, if we found out, we can readdress that in a second reading, make the change if we need to.
This is a resolution.
Right.
This is a resolution.
I think the only change is gonna be their ability to go sooner.
Yeah.
Not, not a tighter restriction. I don't see the point in delaying this. We wanna put in a resolution with an additional condition on. Uh, sentence two of the last paragraph, that possibility of an earlier start date. Can be coordinated. I don't see any reason to coordinate with Devon.
Well, I, I wanna confirm the, uh, he says it's consistent with, uh. This is consistent with Forest Service seasonal wildlife closures in the area. So I don't wanna be, maybe there could have been some changes over the, over in the last few months. And we're dealing with non-factual information, anecdotal information right now. Uh, I know you're, you're, you're trail committee and so forth differently, but. I, I'd rather have that confirmed. Um, because we, we have. Put great weight in CPW's recommendations, uh, in the last year or so.
Is that gonna change our bike park and our batch plant running out there though? It's.
Uh, it's a situational thing. That's, that's why I wanna get this clarified, but I don't wanna approve it like it is and find out Forest Service does not want. You follow?
I follow that, but what's it gonna do to our other two things that's out there more that?
Well, that's what we have to deal with.
Yeah, I mean, if it comes.
I think we're gonna continue. I would like a motion to continue and we can do this at the next meeting. Or we don't have a.
I, I feel strongly that we should follow the recommendation of the wildlife, um, uh, district manager. Um, Devon DeVall on this, um. It's, 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 it's a shed in a very, very sensitive area and, um. I don't think we should second guess Mr. DeVall.
I would, I would say with all due respect to Devon. That there are area trail closures that do end on the twentieth, but none of them in the midterm area.
Yeah, I guess.
That's mid, some middle.
I'm a little confused, cause the only one that's of discussion is two elk and that's a trailhead that's well outside the purview of building the sheds as a cemetery. So I'm, I'm still a little baffled as to what we're concerned about conflict with Devon's policy. What is it? What am I missing as far as what trail we're concerned about as far as the closure?
Well, there's trails and then there's construction activity. I don't know, maybe construction activity has major impact. Um, but the fact is, is that I've, I've got conflicting information.
Honestly, I see a bike park having more stress on the animals than building a shed. And if we're allowing the bike park, why aren't we allowing the shed, I guess?
Uh, they got excavation, uh, we got all those kinds of things that might be, uh, more of an impact. I don't know. I know the CPW has extensive impact studies done on different activities. And maybe it's because it's a construction deal, maybe it's not. I don't know. I mean, if you wanna go ahead and go ahead and do it and find out, oh, we were wrong. Then fine, cause this is a resolution. It's one shot, up or down.
I do. I, I'm cognizant that if you. Asked CPW for their input on a lot of these, they would, A, prefer us to. demolish everything on that side and never use anything or blows all roads. You know, they, they asked us. Not to allow any construction activity in Mentor North outside of three months of the year or something. I think some of their, you know. We can't use the sidewalk on Intern Road. You know, during the winter and things like that. I think I, they have to put out the most aggressive. Ask on certain things. That's just where their agencies, what they do. And I think it's our job to balance that versus. Fairness to the community and things that need to happen and. It's, it's our job to find balance. So in my view, you know, if we're gonna open a bike park on the fifteenth and open some other stuff in that area. We should probably. Let them build a shed.
From a fairness standpoint, it seems to me they're just, they're building a shed and I don't see why it couldn't be built. Um, in that time period that it's not that complicated a building. So the hardship to them is. Super minimal, um, and, um. I, I just don't see that there's enough justification for us to depart from, um, Mr. Dival's recommendation. About the impact in that particular area of construction.
Okay, well, let's, let's get the applicants up and let them do their presentation and then we can figure it out from there.
Yeah, good evening. This is Pedro Campos from the Plan and Landscape Architects, Aaron and Associates, forty eight East. Creek Boulevard in Avon, um, have been working with the cemetery. Um, Mintern River U Cemetery District for about five years on this project. We've been working really hard to try and get this project done, been very cooperative with staff. Um, have put together, uh, extensive documentation. Uh, for the, uh, planning application. Um, we were then asked to, uh. Rezone, which is the next item up, ordinance nine, series twenty twenty four, rezoning of this. So the cemetery's been there almost a hundred years. Uh, burials happen all time of year. Bit of a construction activity, excavation of, uh, a grave site. Um, that takes place three hundred sixty-five days a year there. Based on your discussion, that's kind of the, the words line of thinking that. If there is going to be a wildlife closure, there should be consistency across the area. I think it's been pointed out, there's some construction related activities that happened, uh, just to the south. Including a bike park and a shooting range. Uh, we just asked for a fair treatment and, uh. Be consistent in how you apply this throughout the town. The elk move around to her, does, does the state stationary? And it's like important to, uh, take those things into consideration. We are really, uh, eager to get the project started. If you recall, we applied in twenty twenty one. Uh, and it was a plat amendment. We tried to do this within exchange with the town land. Uh, we came to find out that the land actually wasn't owned by the town. Uh, we've since, we'll come back with the project that's within the confines of the cemetery. And, um, and again, have been super cooperative, uh, been trying to do the right thing, working with the town, the town staff. And, and respectful manner. And we're just at a point where we really need to do this. The equipment is sitting there. Uh, the condition's getting worse year over year. Um, and it is a bit of a hardship if we can't start sooner and start doing some of the, uh. Project. Until June twenty second. I mean, we live in a place that has a shortened construction window, uh, as it is. And this is only gonna make it harder, not just for this year, but in other years, if there was other, um. Work to be done. And again, I go back to the fact, it's an operating cemetery that death doesn't choose when it comes. And there are grave sites being dug in the winter, in the summer, at all times. Um, and it's a facility that. Each of us may use sometime in the future. So I'll just leave it at that. Thank you very much for the opportunity.
Any other questions for Pedro or the, or the cemetery board members? Okay.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, there is somebody in the video audience with their hand up.
Okay, um. Uh, whoever it is can just state your name and address and you, you'll have five minutes.
Uh, good evening. My name's Penal Pareek and I'm the council from Mintern Cemetery District. The address is, uh, five eleven Sixteenth Street. In Denver, Colorado. Um, I would like to echo what Pedro said and we would just like to note for the record that we, um. You know, disagree and object to this wildlife condition that's being placed on the district's application. The district's application, when you, is unanimously, unanimously approved by the DRB. Um, based on the criteria of the code, we haven't found anything in the town code and no one from the town has pointed to any provision. That allows the town to impose this elk, elk habitat on the application. In addition, the district feels that this might be retribution from another matter that has no bearing on this application. Uh, as you guys have stated, other developments with, we believe much bigger impact than this shed exists in the same elk migration corridor. And these same conditions are not being imposed on them or are not being consistently implied. Uh, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so with that, uh, if there's no more questions, Tracy, you may come up.
Smooths, which is good. Hi, this is Tracy Anderson, ten sixteen Mountain Drive, um. I understand that the building aspect, and I'm not against that. I just wanna say. I heard you say that, um. The Colorado Parks Wildlife was overly aggressive. I may even say overly, but there is a reason why. The elk population has been dwindling for years. And, uh, I heard, uh, Mr. Devon's talk, um, a couple of months ago. And to me, that was pretty dire. And, um, I'm part of the community too. And that is priority for, for me, myself and people that I know in the town that we do everything in our power. Just wanna say it. And I'm not saying not to build the shed. I. Would, notwithstanding that, but just in general, I think that we should defer to him. He is the expert. He went to school. He studies elk behavior. And he knows why they, their populations dwindle better than all of us. And, uh, I, I really believe that we should count on those experts and use that as a driving force going forward. Um, and again, I'm not saying to not approve the shed. I just say in general, I think it's really important. And I think that elk maintaining our elk, elk herd should be a, a top priority at this town. So thank you for letting me say that.
Um, and, and just, just so you know, we, we, the town of Mintern had made a decision. With, uh, developments and, and construction activities to get input from the CPW on every project. Um, and it's, and it's because we've had a couple of presentations from them recently. And, um, the, the elk populations are way down in Eagle County. Uh, I mean, Picken County has, you know. Multiplied, I don't know, I'm not sure how many times, uh, how many more times they have in population than we do. They have a significant population in, in Picken County. And we're just a fraction of that here. So. That, that's why we are concerned about. It has nothing to do with past relations with the cemetery. Uh, that's just the most sensitive side of the valley unless you go up, you know, um. Far, far enough to the Port Meadow Mountain that, um, that during the caving season, this is a sensitive time. That's our, that's why I'm, I'm trying to understand what's going on, but that said. I think we've had a pretty, is there any more discussion points, anyone else? Points that anyone wants to make or shall we go ahead and move forward to a vote?
I think it would be helpful to understand what. What, I mean, Devon says it, a closure that mirrors adjacent trail networks and it doesn't. I'm not sure what we're mirroring because we haven't really found, it would be helpful, I think, to understand what. He's mirroring or believes he's mirroring. If that's possible.
Per- perhaps we could continue it and get, um, Mr. Dival, uh, a chance to explain. Um, his position and have the opportunity for the council and the public to ask him questions.
Okay, so, um.
Maybe an email would work for me. I just wanna know what he's talking about.
Is he in disagreement of the state window?
Well, I mean, if it's, if he's thinking it's two elk, like that doesn't mirror the two elk closure and I don't know what other closure exists and it doesn't.
There's a table one called closure two.
But I'm not seeing this page. I apologize. Does he specifically say he's not in agreement with this construction window listed in this resolution?
No, he, I mean, he's recommended June twenty second to November twenty third as.
And that's what's in the resolution. So again, I'm confused as to what we're arguing about.
Well, I just, it, it doesn't seem. For me, the logic here is confusing because it doesn't seem to mirror the adjacent area, which was, I think Brian's point, like. Uh, uh, I don't know that we need to be more restrictive than what's next door to this. I just wanna understand what his thought process is there. And, and if, if we're missing something, perhaps that has broader application to shed, like that might affect the whole area in some way.
Uh, we have council, uh, Tom, that we have council members here that wanna go ahead and approve this and. Rather than continue. And so I wanna make sure. All voices have been heard before we make a decision.
I feel we should have standard though. I mean, if we're talking that same area there too.
I agree.
You know, that we're kinda have some discrepancies there.
Yeah, this is, that's, that's why I wanted to continue. I just wanted to get the facts down. Uh, and is, is Pedro, is, is two weeks gonna make a huge difference to me as far as your construction season? Cause I do wanna, it's not, I'm in no way saying noted this. I just gotta get my facts ready. And, and I'm, I'm like, I'm getting conflicting information.
Yeah, the, the two, two weeks is, is fine. I understand that. Again, I just think the consistencies, we're, we're looking for a discrepancy. I understand and I respect what's stated about. Wildlife, the elk herd, uh, but it seems the consistencies what we're concerned about.
Thank you, Pedro. Yeah, do we have a motion?
We'll make a motion to continue Resolution seventeen, series twenty twenty four, a resolution approving design review to construct a structure at eight oh six and eight oh eight cemetery road. Conditions to next council, town council meeting on fifteen May.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion by Lynn, uh, Kate and a second by Lynn. Since this is the resolution, we'll just do voice vote, all in favor? Okay, so we'll get our act together on our side and then we'll meet you here in a couple of weeks. And next we have ordinance number nine, series twenty twenty four, first reading and ordinance admitting chapter sixteen article. Things have character area to create a cemetery zone district. Well, where do you come from?
Sure.
So that's me. Uh, as Pedro mentioned, uh, when he was, uh, giving his applicant's introduction at the previous agenda item. Uh, one of the conditions, uh, that we, that Planning Commission imposed on their approval of the shed was that. The applicant work with staff to draft zoning for this property as zoning does not currently exist. Um, it, it's, it's kind of, our, our zoning maps are a little weird. Uh, the one visiting maps in the code have color on them, but no legend, uh, which is always super helpful. Uh, and, and the zoning maps on the website don't even show color, uh, and so it does not appear that any zoning is applied to it. So, uh, that is what we have done. We have drafted this ordinance applying zoning, uh, to the, this property. Creating cemetery zone district with dimensional standards, uh, height limitation, um. Uh, uses, uh, that are allowed within the cemetery. Uh, so that went through Planning Commission. And received a, a recommendation of approval to the town council with no changes. Um, and we have also had that reviewed by the cemetery's board, uh, and have received, uh, no. Request from changes from them either. So. The cemetery board is here today and I can certainly take any questions on this ordinance.
Okay, so starting with questions, uh, for Madison, um, do we have any? I just have one question on the use tables. On page two ninety-six, just a quick question. Uh, uh, a use by right in accessory building. Accessory building and structures. What, what is, I mean, structures can be in it?
That was to cover, um, the shed.
Okay, so it's an, so the accessory building is there, but is there any need to say structures? Cause it's, an accessory building is a structure.
Uh, that is true. A building is a structure, um. But based on the definitions that we have. Uh, within article two. I do not believe a structure is always a building. Like a building is always a structure, but a structure might not necessarily be a building if it doesn't have a roof.
So, yeah, what I'm saying is, I have no problem with the accessory building, uh, but structure is an open-ended.
Okay.
Thing. So, I mean, they could put a parking lot there. I mean, the structure is, so if, if it's defined, whatever they would wanna do in the future. Uh, is, is a use by right. They've got, you know, a few use by rights, cause it's a cemetery district. But, you know, uh, Pedro, do you have any take on that?
Yeah, we were fine with the uses. I think the more important thing were some of the other, uh, call of area that was lead. I'm sorry, say that again. Some of the other uses that are covered, uh, uh, we're fine with the language, as Madison said, uh, as proposed.
Okay. Um, is there any other questions for Madison? Well, Pedro stays there with asking a question. So, any, any, are any concerns with use by right table?
No, um, we're, we're real happy to be part of the town and have zoning. Cause it gives dimensional limitations, whereas before it was kind of a free for all. And, um, in fact, it probably would have helped us, uh, maybe a few years ago. Um, so this is hopefully one of the last remaining pieces with the, the, the planned mechanisms that. Affected this parcel over the last few years. Um, so we're happy to reach this point. It was a condition that was imposed by the Planning. Commission as part of the prior, uh, application. And so we've been trying hard to get to the point we can. Build it. And this is another step in the process, uh, that's taken a while.
So, so if we could just, uh, I like to just alter this, just getting rid of an structure.
This church, there's a good stone or a, or something. Sorry, what if the structure is like a gray stone or?
I have a definition.
Well, this is, uh. As far as accessory building. I get that. And there, I think y'all have. In your zoning regs as far as use, I mean, it's a cemetery district. Obviously gray stones are part of that, so.
Madison has a definition of structure though.
I, I do. Um, so structure, uh, according to the code means anything constructed or erected. The use of which requires location on or in the ground, including buildings, mobile homes, billboards, swimming pools or the like or part thereof. Utility poles, flag poles or walls and fences less than four feet high are excluded.
So, so maybe we could solve the problem by saying accessory building and accessory structures. Because that definition of structure would allow them to build almost anything. Um, I, I share Earl's concern.
I mean, a cemetery is the use right by right.
Building and accessory structures that would narrow it down, I think appropriately.
However, under our own code, even though that's a use by right, another structure. As they are now part of the zoning, would still go through the normal submission process to the town, would it not?
That's correct.
So I think there's some confusion in the fact that the cemetery is not gonna turn around and go willy-nilly. On building structures, because they're still gonna have to go through the submission process to the town. So use by right is probably being looked at not totally accurate in regards to this language.
I mean, I don't, uh, I mean, Pedro, are you seeing limitations for zoning? Cause you have cemetery use.
No, we, we have a, there's a dimensional limitation, there's a height limitation that comes with this zoning. There are setbacks and safeguards. And then there's the process that you've just mentioned, um, of going forth through the design review and planning commission and town council process would be.
Those accessory structures, I don't like that either because what's an accessory structure? I don't know. So that's just open ended. So all I'm saying is, you know, use by rights, we try to be as well-defined as we can. And so let's just say accessory building for that particular item. Uh, use by right is cemetery and several other things. And I don't know that that's, there's anything limiting there and for cemetery, is there?
No, we just wanna make sure that make the sheds and.
Yeah. That, that's, that's the, my only intent there is we don't like to leave open ended uses. Uh, so if you just get rid of, uh, I'll make a motion to approve. Just to get cut to the chase, uh, is there any more questions from the board besides this particular issue? Um, if not, then I'd like to make a motion for ordinance number nine, series twenty twenty four, first reading and ordinance admitting. Chapter sixteen, article eleven, the lion's head character area to create a cemetery zone. I should have the resume of the ordinance up here. With the only modif, huh?
Have you opened public hearing yet?
Any comment from the public?
Hey, nobody ever answers.
Jay, you got anybody out there? Jay, you got anybody out there?
I'm sure there's no one in the audience.
What did he say?
No.
Thank you, you can just say no, Jay. Close the public hearing, um. Bear with me, does anybody have the ordinance up in front of them?
Yes.
Okay, uh. If you, are you okay?
No, you want me to do that on it, and then you just fill in what you wanna change?
That's fine.
Okay.
I'll make the motion to approve ordinance number nine, series twenty twenty four, ordinance of the town of Minter, amending chapter sixteen of the Minter municipal code to create a cemetery zone district and associated use and development standards within the Lionshead character area.
With the only modification being, uh, under the table sixteen eleven fifty, uh, the use table, uh, with accessory building and structure, we delete and structure. Second, do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, it's an ordinance, uh, so roll call please.
Brandon.
Oh, okay.
Dusty, I.
Eric, I.
Earl, I.
Lynn, I.
Okay, motion by Gusty and a second by Lynn, so, thank you very much, ordinance number six, first reading has been passed. And we're moving on. Okay, that's the last of our action items, I believe. So, we're now into discussion items. Uh, first item is residential irrigation and sprinkler tiered water rate structure.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, so this, um, has been on our radar for quite some time. We wanted to bring this forward solely as a discussion direction item, to give everyone plenty of time to bring this topic up, uh, get it out into the community, uh, allow staff to do some more, uh, homework on our end, I will not, uh, be shy about saying this has been a, a huge lift to address this, and I know it probably doesn't seem like it should be, but uh, given where our current data is for the Minter and Water Utility and the information that we have to work off, there's a lot of improvements that need to be made throughout this process, so this has been a great opportunity to start finding some of those quirks and fixing them. So with that, uh, part of the, uh, plan that came before you back in January through the Climate Action Collaborative identified going to a tiered rate structure. Uh, no need to reinvent the wheel, Eagle River Water and Sanitation has already created a tiered rate structure for residential units. Uh, Minter is going to be proposing a somewhat similar approach in that all individually metered residential units, sorry. Individually metered.
Correct.
All individually metered residential units would move to this new tiered rate structure whereby we have found the majority of the town will actually save money, uh, because what this does is it, uh, removes the multiplier. Most folks in town are already only one SFE, and that, in effect, eliminates larger homes getting water for a lesser price, is what that does. Uh, to summarize, uh, what we have found, what, what Jim Mann has found is that for, uh, multi unit structures on one meter, this would not be equitable. Uh, because we're taking the multiplier away, so that's why we're only recommending it at this time for, uh, s- structures with a single meter, uh, so we wanna make sure that we're equitable. Uh, Eagle River Water and Sand, I believe, is looking at their system as well, and looks like they might be making some modifications to their system to ensure, uh, we are approaching this in the right way.
Do we have a sense on how many exceptions there?
Uh, you know, I've asked, Jay will be working on that over this next month, because I do plan to bring this back to you all pending whatever direction you might give tonight, uh, for the January, January, June six.
Fifth.
The first meeting in June, yeah, June fifth, for the first meeting in June for consideration under a resolution. So, in that time, uh, we also will be working on irrigation and sprinkler accounts, because we want irrigation and sprinkler accounts to follow this similar pattern where the multiplier is taken out, I had hoped, I had really hoped to do, um, a si- a system very similar to ERWSD, but it's just more bandwidth than our staff has, I mean, it's, it's, it's a lot, so. So, this just simplifies that process, uh, takes away a lot of the calculations and mapping and all sorts of things, although thankfully Madison's already done all the mapping. So, we will be looking to implement something along these lines, uh, ensuring that we are, uh, as equitable as we can be and ensuring that everybody, people with larger homes included are paying their fair share, so as it states in Jim Mann's memo, a lo- a majority of the folks in town will be seeing a small cost savings uh, through this new recommended, uh, structure of tiers. Uh, but we leave this open to you all to, uh, questions, concerns, ideas, I have Jim Mann here who wrote the memo, who can talk about it far, uh, deeper at length than I can, and I don't think some of you have met Jim Mann, so he's been with us for quite a while, we're lucky to have him and his insight into water rate analysis, so with that, if you would like to add to that, Jim?
Um, no, I think you kinda summarized everything, I mean, I, I think probably the key thing to remember is you've got three different rate, you've got a base rate, a debt service rate, and the volumetric rate. The current volumetric rate, you charge a per gallon fee for gallon one, and it's the same charge all the way through. The recommendation from the, the report from January, February was that you go to what we would refer to as more of a conservation rate structure, where the more water you use, the more expensive it's gonna get, so in the first tier, you know, maybe it's six and, you know, I think we show six and three quarters, or six and seventy-five at for a thousand gallons, once you get past three thousand gallons, that price goes up for the next three thousand gallons, and then the three thousand gallons after that. And part of the concern was that, in, in looking at that kind of use of a multiplier, so if you were a single-family unit and you had two SFEs and you were using a lot of water, you never, you may not have gotten out of that first tier. Whereas if I was just a regular, single-family, you know, unit of nominal size, I was getting out of that first tier and paying more money and not necessarily ha- on an equitable basis, and so that, that heavier user was catching a break. And so this, this corrects that for that single-family unit on a single meter, that's, you know, a, a large home using a lot of water, as opposed to, you know, somebody who's, you know, you know, maybe in a thousand square feet, not using that much water. Um, you know, when you look at your average residential customer on a single-family basis, they're using about three thousand gallons, so this structure, that's why this kind of tiered rates structure will result in a savings for the vast majority of the single-family users, because they're just not using that much of it. It's those that are outside of that, that are getting in what we would create as the second tier or the third tier. That's, they're gonna, they're gonna pay a little bit more, uh, but the vast majority of folks are gonna see a reduction in their, in their, uh, volumetric.
Other corrections that we're looking to make through this process is adding the base rate and debt service fees to irrigation and sprinkler accounts for the time that they're in use over the summer.
Um, could you justify for me what the sprinkler, was definitely irrigation or sprinkler?
Yes, so Jay, correct me if I'm wrong, but sprinkler accounts are connected to a structure and irrigation accounts are not?
Correct.
Okay.
How many of those did we have, wasn't it a minimal amount, ten, eleven, something like that?
It's a, so our irrigation and sprinkler accounts are a handful that, that are not, uh, the municipal accounts.
I would say it's probably less than twenty-five for the two classes together.
And right now they're not? They have no base rate?
They have no base fee and they have no debt service fee. They were never given those fees, um. Uh, so they definitely need to be imposed.
Um, I have a couple of things, are we going down this way, or are we starting, we'll start down here again? I, we'll go for it, um, first of all, I think like, it was really cool to see this, I think like the main two things that I wanted to see out of a tier, or the promises that I saw out of a tiered um, rate system is, A, like, hopefully, um, you know, staring down some major increases in our debt, uh, service costs to provide our citizens some relief from that, or, um, furthermore, like, opportunity for relief from that, right, like, you, if you are so inclined and you wanna minimize your water bill, now you can, um, kinda, you can do so. Um, the other thing would be to shave peak, right, in the summer, in our highest things, and that's more of like a future water supply issue. Um, and I guess my question is more along those lines, um, maybe Eagle River Water and Sand provided some of the info, or maybe there's other examples from talent or from water systems that have gone to a tiered structure in, you know, year one, year two, year three, do you see behavior change from some of those big accounts, or do they just tend to pay and make it cheaper for everybody else, or do people change their use based on it, or what happens?
Typically, what happens when you modify a grade structure, and in this case is a fairly big modification, there's a short term, for those that all of a sudden have to start paying more money, there's a short-term reduction and they can serve a lot of water, this is more on the residential side, but then they go back to their old habits over time. Um, this may be a large enough impact where you'll see less of the outside use of water, um, I, you know, I think, um, you've got some very heavy users, especially when you get to the sprinkler side of things, that I'm not sure that they've been really that concerned with their water use, and they may become more concerned with their water use along the way. The other piece of this is that with those sprinkler and irrigation.
I can, sorry, were you getting yelled at?
I got a text.
Okay, sorry, Jay. Referred to him as God earlier, he knows in his voice.
Yeah, it would be airing, yeah.
Right, um, but the, the, the reality is, is the, uh, the irrigation and sprinkler, those are the customers that may probably make the biggest changes. Um, you may have some of the residential customers make some changes based upon their out, outside water uses, but basically inside the house, most people are gonna be, you know, still using the same amount of water, so there may be some modification, but I wouldn't say it's gonna be significant. Um, it's, you know, the sprinkler, that one may be a lot less use, they might start paying a little bit more attention to the water that they use, but by implementing the base fee and the debt service fee, that is going to address another inequity that you had in your rate structure. So can you give us, uh, let's see? Just to get, cause people are just watching TV on this, why don't you, could you just review the current draft of the tier system? Sure, so right now, uh, as I mentioned, you've got the, the three rate structures, the base rate is a hundred and sixteen seventy-seven per SFE per month. Um, and that's, you know, just a straight charge goes on the bill, then you've got your debt repayment rate, which currently is seventeen dollars and thirty-seven cents per SFE per month, and then your current volumetric rate is eight dollars and eighty-two cents per thousand gallons for gallon one for however many gallons you use. Since we're really paying attention to the volumetric side, right now, based upon the last year's worth of data that we have, that generates about a hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars worth of revenues for the utility. Um, the structure that we're looking at going is a three-tier structure, where the first three thousand gallons would be charged at six dollars and seventy-five cents a thousand. The next three thousand gallons would be nine dollars and seventy-five cents a gallon, and then anything more than that six thousand gallons would be charged at twelve dollars and seventy-five cents. When we plug that back into the, uh, user data that we have, that generates the, from a, uh, it, and I should mention that eliminate, this also eliminates the multiplier on, uh, for the volumetric side for single-family units that are above one SFE. So if you're, you know, if you're a two SFE as a single family, we're not multiplying these rates by the, the, the rate tiers by two, so that doesn't put that into, to effect, but this me- methodology generates about a hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars of volumetric rate revenue, so our goal was not to generate necessarily more volumetric rate revenue on the residential side, it was to keep it relatively stable. And I, I will, I will say that there is nothing magical about six seventy-five, nine seventy-five, twelve seventy-five. This is kind of a fungible thing that we can look at in terms of the, how much feedback we get from you folks, in terms of how you wanna see those, you could put more of a penalty on the big users um, and, and reduce the, the first three thousand gallon rate. Our goal, though, is to still achieve about a hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars worth of volumetric revenue, volumetric water sale revenue, to keep it in the, in the same realm in terms of what the percentage is for the total revenues, which is in that fifteen to twenty percent range. Cause if you, and, and the reason we wanna do that is if we've, if we rely too much on the, the, the volumetric side, you get a wet year, you might come up short in terms of the revenues that you're gonna achieve for the year, which creates a problem. Um, and then on the other side of the equation, if you get a really dry year, you might generate too much in terms of revenue, and that's not necessarily what you'll do either. Cool. And then, uh, could you do the same thing on the irrigation rates? So, so on the irrigation rates, um, I did not actually put in the, um, rates, I can probably tell you that if I look through my file. Um, but the rates, there, there are five tiers in the irrigation and the sprinkler rates, and for irrigation, um, which is, again, irrigation is tied to a structure. Um, those rates, those tiers are zero to eight thousand gallons, and then eight thousand gallon increments thereafter, and the tier one rate would be twelve fifty, twenty, twenty-seven fifty, thirty-five, and forty-two fifty in terms of per thousand gallons, uh, the sprinkler rates, uh, these are a little different, the first tier is twenty thousand gallons, and then it's ten thousand gallon increments is what you're currently at, those, we would leave the, the same, but the rates would be thirteen twenty-five, twenty-one, twenty-eight seventy-five, thirty-six fifty, and then forty-four twenty-five, so it's a little higher than the, uh, the irrigation rates are, uh. Well, it's here, here, Eric. Yeah, it's just about right. The, uh, base year revenues that we had established was about a hundred thousand, a hundred and six thousand dollars. Um, the new revenue stream with applying the base revenues and the debt service revenues would be about a hundred and forty-six thousand dollars, and that's simply because we're now applying those base and debt service revenues to these accounts as well, and that's why that's going up. And, you know, ultimately, as we look at your revenue mix on a year-to-year basis, depending on where we're headed, that may allow us to make some adjustments elsewhere, so that we're not generating too much money. Okay. Thank you, James, very good. Um, any questions, thoughts?
Could I speak?
Yes.
So, I actually went and, and compared this to the Eagle Water and Sand District, um, tiered rates and how they handle SFEs, and I think this is quite significantly different. Um, the biggest issue I have with it, um, i- i- is with we go, are the only issues I have with it are with regard to the residential rates, um. I don't think anybody believes that larger homes should get cheaper water, but this is kinda like, um, double dipping against the larger homes, because let's say you have a large family and you have a house larger than three thousand square feet, and you have more than one SFE. Well, if you have two SFEs, you're paying base rate, i- if it were Eagle Water and Sand District, you'd only be paying eighty dollars for two SFEs. In Minter, you're paying two hundred and thirty-four dollars a month, and that's not the cost of obtaining the SFEs. In Minter, you're paying two hundred and thirty four dollars a month and that's not the cost of obtaining the SFEs. That's a cost that's put in there to pay for the assumption that they're going to be using more water. So it it um and then if you add the tier system on top of that. And don't give them any credit for the extra hundred and uh seventeen dollars a month they're paying. That means those homes are paying a lot more for water than anybody else is um per unit of water. So if if you're going to do it fairly with and apply the tier system um. And and make the assumption that everybody is counted as only one SFEs for purposes of the tier system. It seems to me that there should be a credit for this extra hundred and seventeen dollars a month. Um that the two SFE uh homes have. Um the other thing is, uh the tier system in Eagle, if all the rest of the county. Um it doesn't start until you hit six thousand um. Uh gallons a month, but ours Minter, the one that's proposed would start at three thousand. Which seems like um i- it's much stricter and more severe and the rates are much higher. Um and I understand that water in Minter is more expensive, but I would like to see. Um the actual numbers are of how people are charged per volume. Um compare, you know, at the current time compared to this to see that in fact it really will result in. Lower rates for for people um and it certainly seems like it's unfair. Um to, I mean, it's double charging. Uh people with who have more than one SFE, so now only they have to pay. For the SFE originally, whatever costs or I think it what is currently forty thousand dollars, but every month they pay. This whole amount extra and that's not applied to how much won't be in future applied to how much water they get.
Uh Jim did say that the average is three dollars, three thousand gallons throughout the town, so. Um that's the average of it, uh in case you missed that, but uh thank you, Lynn, uh is there any other comments?
Yeah, I have something, I figured I have something. I too like Lynn looked at Eagle Rivers uh site. And their efficient indoor water uses zero to six thousand, their efficient outside water uses six to twelve. The way I see this, one to three, we're just telling everybody that has lawns not to water their lawns anymore. I know I've gone down this road before as far as. Zero escape and stuff, my view, a lot of zero escape is nothing but having a weeded yard. Uh I could use the lot next to me at the fire station, for example, but we keep talking about. You know, fire mitigation, if people aren't watering their yards and it all turns up, it turns into straw and you have a lightning strike, there we go. I hate to say it, we're kinda. Taking care of the people don't have lawns and the people that have lawns, they're gonna be paying to pay have their lawn and I feel really, this was back in eighty four, but. When we came into P and Z to get our permit. I actually had bisqueined down on my yard and I was gonna go down and get lava rot that rock and that was gonna be my yard, because I didn't wanna do maintenance. I was told I had to have a yard, I was told I had to have a landscape plan now. And back in eighty four, if I was able to do it, I wouldn't have be having to pay the high water rate to water my yard. I just wonder how many other people experienced that too and then now we're penalized them for this, but I understand being conservative. We must not be conservative, because in our house, we have an eighteen hundred square foot house, we average four thousand a month. In the winter when we're not actually watering the yard, in the summertime, I went as high one month last year as seven thousand, but. I'd rather see a yard than see weeds and having a uh lightning strike burn my house down because I didn't pay the extra. You know, fifty bucks or whatever for water, but I don't, I I just feel that we're. Too efficient with our tier system here with one basically zero to three thousand. When Eagle River showing they're efficient at zero to six and they're kind of the experts at it, so. And I know this is what made the numbers work as far as, you know, getting the hundred and seventy seven thousand that we're getting now for. The current rate, you know, and that's kinda how this balanced it, but I I just think this is a little too extreme.
And so if I might just respond to that, that we're here tonight to get the feedback. So that we can go and make adjustments as council would like, knowing that we need to keep a base amount of revenue coming in. I I will say Eagle River Water and Sanitation District has a very large user area, which have. Vastly differing lot sizes than Minter, so Minter has quite small lots in comparison and hence smaller average sizes. But just as Jim said, things like the the tiers, the amount per tier, we're we're here to get feedback from the council this evening. So if there's specific suggestions on that, knowing we have to stick within certain parameters for the revenues, we're open.
Personally, I'd like to see the. UC jump a little bit, I mean, maybe on the higher higher use, we. Hit them a little higher, because I was looking at Eagle River, what they charge, you know, when they get into the excessive use, you're talking from three seventy to twenty dollars. I mean, when you're in that.
Users in Minter are, you see more than thirty thousand gallons a month, like.
No, but even if you go up to twelve, look, it's and it's three times a mile. Here is three seventy versus thirteen, so.
It would be, it would be interesting to see how that would impact it, because like I I do think it's extremely important, again, like looking at potential. Investments in water infrastructure, they're gonna make all of our rates go up, we have to make sure that we can allow an option for our citizens to. Be as frugal as they want to or need to be with their.
So yeah, and and so we're tilting this um so that the large users have to pay more. Uh if you kind of, it would be helpful if we had information on. How many accounts are. Uh average, now this is an average amount, that's averaging in the winter as well, I assume. Um so how many users are averaging three thousand gallons? Nowhere's get that, get some, how many users are are doing what?
So we have over five hundred users.
Yes.
And you're wanting to know what what is it you're wanting to know?
In no words, people that average three thousand gallons a year, yeah, or they are is two hundred accounts. And people that average six thousand gallons a year, that's how many accounts and then over six thousand, is that? Two people or is it another hundred, what? That's that's what, so that way we can understand what we're doing to the budget if we do, how we can shake the tiers is what I'm after. So if you go zero to six thousand and uh we probably shouldn't keep it at six seventy five, we might have to go up and. Let's say let's add a buck and say it's zero to six thousand, it's seven seventy five, but then, well, we have to do the math, right, so we just need to understand. How to shake here so that we're getting where we need to be and Jim's on it with uh with a lower tier, tier two being a lower level. Uh and then. Go up in there, that's just my thought.
It it might be interesting to eliminate the second homeowners too, when you're looking at the average consumption in Minter.
Staff doesn't have that exact data.
Yeah.
Okay.
I I mean, I could take guesses, I mean, it's a small enough town, but out of the five hundred and something accounts like. It's many of them would be me guessing as to whether they're first or second.
In theory, their water use should. Be representative of their water use, like if they're not here, they're not using water, they're not paying for it, if they are here, they're using water, right, like.
That's the way it shows on the.
Yeah, charts and either way, they're getting the same base rate every month, whether they use any or not, right, because they're connected to the system.
Yeah.
So our irrigation and sprinkler waters is the same potable water that's coming in the tap. As opposed to ERWD is that different down there, since obviously.
So we do have an area in town that we use raw water.
Right.
Uh at Little Beach. Everything else, you're you're correct, is is potable.
People are resistant.
Right.
So I guess it begs the question in regards to the tier system is trying to maybe look at the residential. To be a little more commensurate with the irrigation and sprinkler piece. Not saying the same, but in regards to this discussion about quantity, zero to three thousand versus. Tier one for irrigation, for example, zero to eight thousand, same drop of water, but I'm paying two different rates for it.
Well, outdoor irrigation and sprinkler accounts are almost entirely consumptive. And count uh far greater against our consumptive use limitations, especially in the summertime. Where we have bumped up against that before, so there's a higher. Cost to Minter, not necessarily dollar value, but a higher cost to Minter for that irrigation water.
Agreed. So.
If, yeah, a clarifying question, in my uh in my understanding, your suggestion is that. The irrigation and sprinklers would pay the same rate per thousand gallons. Um as the resident, as the other customers, the residential customers.
Well, basically, right now, tier three, six thousand gallons or more is at twelve seventy five.
Yep.
And you're at twelve fifty at eight thousand gallons on sprinkler, obviously, your start point is zero in that category. So I guess I'm just asking the question, because at the end of the day, this is Michelle pointed out, that category of utilization is more expensive to us. So obviously, a couple of different things, one, one of the big driving pieces of this is. Considering what's potentially on the horizon in regards to additional costs, place they start water. Is to do a fair and equitable breakdown, which is the intent of this, I believe, on the residential side. And I understand Gussie's concern as well, as far as that's concerned, but it still goes back to the point of. What difference does it make what it's used against and you can explain that to me, where. As I hate to say it, as a resident, I'm paying six seventy five uh to fill my bathtub. But then I'm gonna turn around and pay twelve fifty to water my grass with the same drop of water.
Can I address that, Tom?
Pipe?
Understood, yeah, and I'm I'm just clarifying in regards to, if we're gonna look at the tiered system and obviously one of the things we're bumping up against is a cap. In regards, as you just said, dry year, wet year, uh don't want too much revenue and you don't want less. But I would, I would drive that, putting in an incentive system in here, particularly for the tiered piece residential. And possibly the irrigation and sprinklers, so it's a matter of just rejigging the math a bit, maybe. A a low users, lower amount of money, period, which you've tried to do here.
I'm gonna ask you to go a little deeper, because I I think I'm following what you're what you're recommending, so can you give an example of what your incentive would look like?
Uh sure, uh four seventy five up to three thousand gallons or change that to four thou, but basically on the residential side. As Lynn alluded to, as well as Gusty in regards to understanding a larger cross section of uh customers and ERWD than here. And our other overlying issue of our cost problems associated with our entire utility. But possibly revisiting the tiers in regards to quantity and then. Uh rejigging that in regards to hypothetically four seventy five, ten seventy five, fourteen seventy five, just as an example.
Okay.
At the end of the day, it's, yeah, it's not linear, uh and still, still is a a a net net or. You know, net zero as far as the.
You're, you're talking about just, you know, lowering that lowest tier. Significantly and and hitting the higher, the higher users more on the volumetric side. So. Understand that correctly, okay.
Uh let me make the argument about why it's important to have the sprinklers and the irrigation people pay a lot more. Um the main reason I think we have our water um moratorium is that we ha- ha- hit our consumptive. Limits and um. In measuring consumption, indoor water is like eighty five, ninety percent return to the stream downstream. But outdoor water is like eighty five percent, I'm sorry, seventy five percent um not returned. So it's, it's like something like four or five times um makes it bigger depth. On our, on the measurement of our consumptive limits, so it's really outdoor water usage. That limits our um. Our ability to provide more water for other people and for development. Um and that's why the sprinkler irrigation folks um. Impact our consumptive limits so greatly and why it's appropriate for them to have higher water. Um rates than um residential users who consume primarily indoor water.
Out of curiosity, which I don't think we have the answer to that, I don't know, Gassi, you said you have sprinkler system. Irrigation or?
Host on the sprinkler system.
I guess it begs the question, we're coming up with twenty thousand gallons as a metric, where do we get that? Is that just an ERWD average utilization per single family home or where that number?
No, that's a, that's a, the number of your current tiers, we did not adjust the. The irrigation or sprinkler tier gallon allowances.
So I go one step further and say maybe we need to revisit quantities.
And that's.
So they change your cost here, but change tier one through five in regards to quantity, fifty thousand gallons, wow. That's impressive. I'm unaware of any farms in the greater Minter town area, so.
Not much, sorry, though, they use it on Eagle Rivers, that's a good one, right?
This is very helpful, so what I believe we're hearing is amend the. Dollar amounts for the residential rates to be more conducive to the average users paying less. If you have, if you use three thousand gallons a month, you'll you'll pay less, like the four seventy five is an example.
Right.
Uh for thirty three thousand gallons, uh and then go up non-linearly. Uh to get to those higher rates pretty quickly when you break out over three thousand uh or over six thousand gallons. And then what I'm hearing from the irrigation and sprinkler side is actually uh the reverse. In regards to the tiered gallon use, where the tiers would be started at lower gallon amounts. Uh and that would be something that we would need to take a look at current usage and see how that works out, but. Right now, if we're at zero to twenty thousand, Tom, what I think I hear you saying and I'm looking for you to confirm or correct me. Maybe that would be, you know, zero to twelve thousand gallons or zero to fifteen thousand.
I go as far as to say, why isn't irrigation and sprinkler?
Yeah, like, why are those different to begin with?
Why can't they just be the same?
Like zero to three thousand.
Take sprinkler and shove it down where irrigation is right now.
Is there an intention behind those being different?
I mean, that's a, that's a huge disparity, well, let's put it this way, sprinkler rate uh at. Hmm where we at, twenty four thousand, so twenty thousand and thirty thousand gallons is uh twenty one dollars, but if you use it for irrigation. To get in that same ballpark, you're at twenty seven fifty, so I guess my question is. Or suggestion is sprinkler gets converted to what you currently have for irrigation, they should just be one of the same.
Honestly, me personally, I still don't like the the three thousand gallons, I mean, looking at Eagle River and they classified this as efficient indoor use. Zero, so I think we're way, way over efficient with zero to three, even though we do have some of those showing like the. Average is three, I I don't know, I, we try really hard to conserve water and I know I'm on four.
Is our.
Must not be trying hard enough.
Is our average square footage in town different than?
Vastly, I would imagine.
Yeah.
Yes, and the average lot size is significantly smaller.
So they're just assuming they have bigger houses and bigger irrigation.
But if council would like to see.
Some of them might, some of them not, like in Eagleville, all those duplexes, so.
Um that's a very small part of there.
Well, I think if your irrigation and your sprinkler piece get rejigged math wise, then arguably you can change the baseline metric. On the residential, whether it's four thousand gallon, I, again, I'm just shooting from the hip as opposed to what is.
No, we're looking for feedback, right?
Sure, so but I mean ERWD, you said Gusty, baseline is what, zero to what?
Eight.
Zero four?
Zero six.
Zero six.
But I would argue. But I would argue. We don't compare to them.
No.
Sizes, but. But if council is wanting to move off of three thousand, we can do that. If you wanna go zero to four thousand gallons, which is above what the average user uses.
Well, I mean, I think it would be helpful just to understand like that bell curve of use, like. If if three thousand gallons captures seventy percent of our town like that, I don't know why we would.
Well, and one of the things you have to remember with the the average is that. It's averaging second homeowners that aren't here all the time. So.
We have some of those.
Average resident who's living here full time is likely to use more than three thousand gallons.
Well, we could do a simple informal survey. And the members of this council could go back and look at their own water bill and come back with an amount of gallons we burned and have a discussion.
I have a couple of theoreticals then on that. So I like I don't know what our current estimate is. Is it still around eight per eighty percent, sixty percent full occupancy? I don't know. Hang around here on taps, it's hard to tell. But like, would it make sense to look at a higher base rate and then a. Free tier so that second homeowners. Pay more, but then residents can pay less based on what the. What an average like rest. So you see what I'm saying? Does this make sense? So like a second homeowner is paying the same base rate as a resident right now. And we've got, you know, then the residents actually live here, which we want to encourage in this town. So they're they're paying, you know, extra.
Water and one of them isn't.
Yeah, but. There's you still have to have a plant, you still have to have infrastructure and you still have to all of that, right? And they probably still have irrigation, they're probably still, you know, using water in the summer, so.
In the in the construct of water rate methodology. You overall for your revenue mix, you want roughly eighty to eighty-five percent coming from fixed charges. And fifteen to twenty percent coming from volumetric, the the use side of things. That's where we are currently. So if we start increasing the base, we're gonna shift that. Mix maybe to a ninety-ten and. That probably becomes punitive to some people and a benefit to others.
Not to mention the spaghetti that would occur with those second homeowners saying, well, now this is my primary residence. It's not.
No, you wouldn't. That wouldn't have anything to do with it. It would just be like how much water you're using. So basically giving free water to people. So you'd say you'd say like the first three thousand gallons are free, but to a second homeowner, they don't care. They're using zero.
Historically, historically, um I think it was what, four years ago, three years ago now? The town had a system where. The first, I don't remember how many gallons it was.
You were given six thousand. Gallons for free.
For yeah, that was included in your base rate. And so that didn't encourage anybody to use less than six thousand gallons.
I was about to say, look where we are now.
And 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 so.
Well, I would give the free to like two thousand gallons or something, you know, I don't. So that's I'm just trying to throw spaghetti along here. My other.
With the the decision several years ago was to move off of that and start charging for gallon one. As opposed to having a certain number of gallons included in the base.
I was just trying to figure out our, because that seems like that's a problem when if we're determining our average based off of. Second homeowner accounts, which I don't even know what an average second homeowner account would use. Like, is it truly like?
Depend on how much that second owner is in their second home.
Yeah.
You know, if they're coming up every weekend for ski season. They're they're, I mean, they're gonna use, they're gonna use some water, but they're not gonna use what they would. Use if they actually live there. I mean, let's put a punch card system in each home, second home.
But uh but anyway, I think I think I think maintaining, if you go back to meddling with base rates, we're losing our. Um carrot of saving money by by not using an excessive amount of water.
And we want to stay at three thousand and you'd try your hardest to stay under three thousand because that's free, but I don't know. The other the other one I had um real quickly was like power companies use, you know, um variable rate structures. It's like it varies by the hour. Obviously, it's peaked on peak. Are there any precedents for like, you know, given it's twenty twenty-four and. Outdoor watering is kind of a luxury in the Western United States. Is there any? And that's when our consumptive use peaks. And is most most expensive. Is there any like precedent for higher rates for? June, July, August or something, or like separate rates for the separate months?
That's where the sprinkler innovation comes into play.
Yeah, it kind of modifies itself because you don't irrigate in the winters, so you build it lower and you use irrigate in the summer.
You're you're talking to time, 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 time.
Yeah. No, no, we can't get that specific. I would say I would say month by month.
Month to month.
It's like if somebody's using, you know, somebody's using four thousand gallons, six thousand gallons indoors during December, it's. You know, that's not a big of a deal to us as it is. So that might be another way for like a local to save money. I'm just trying to throw like different structures out there. Cause like to me, the most like I don't care what three thousand, four thousand, whatever. To me. As long as we're providing a way for the majority of our citizens to save money if they choose to. On water. That's most important to me. And the other part is providing an incentive to shave peak in the summer to avoid getting, cause no, ducking under our consumptive calls.
Well, out of a technical standpoint, excluding the MSC. Is there a separate meter on these? Irrigation homes that delineates what's going in a shower and what's going in the yard?
Irrigation and sprinkler accounts have their own meters.
So they do have a separate.
Those are like.
Those are specific accounts. So for the average. Single family home, you just have a a hose on the on a nozzle on the outside of your home or you.
So you're paying, you're paying tier one through five other rate. Your tier one through three.
That's right.
They don't have sub meters at all.
Uh the only exception to that will now be the Minter North Project, who is putting. All of their outdoor irrigation on a on a separate meter for all of their homes included. So it's it's pretty. New.
And and that'll that'll be a irrigation slash sprinkler. That's right, yeah.
So what we've heard is uh modify the tiers for the residential to start at a higher per thousand gallon amount. Gusty, would you say that's correct?
Thank you.
Okay, uh bring down the lowest tiered price per residential unit. But then go up in price for those next two tiers uh in a nonlinear fashion to cover the difference. And to change the sprinkler and irrigation accounts to mimic the residential accounts.
Or or just consolidate. Yeah, so like sprinkler be and irrigation become one under irrigation, if that's the right.
They would have the same, if I understood correctly, you were suggesting same tier structure, same rates.
Right, so it's like zero to eight for both or.
Yeah.
Get rid of twenty thousand gallon as a metric.
Yep.
Yes.
I need us. One more time, please.
So it takes sprinkler rates?
Yep.
Just that entire category?
Yep.
Eraser.
Good.
Take the word sprinkler and put irrigation slash sprinkler rates would be as follows, tier one through five, zero to eight thousand gallons.
So you're you're just combining.
So that makes sense.
Irrigation. Under the same.
Irrigation and sprinkler.
Unless there's some sort of compelling reason that they're separated. Thank you. I now understand.
We should we tighten it up to to make it more like instead of zero to eight thousand, make it zero to. Six thousand or five thousand or something like that to.
Uh again, I I I would have to ask the science behind the original quantities and why they're. Same same question would be in line with the residential fees. So I guess a simple question to ERWD, theirs is based on an average? Right?
If this gets into the very.
Very technical.
Cause we keep saying average, so.
Their irrigation grants are based on the hydrological.
Oh, no, no, sorry. So just for the residential fees, just as an example. ERWD's per the sheet right there is based on a consumptive average as to where they came over that system, right?
Yep.
And that is a metric we feel is probably inaccurate for the town of Minter. Due to the prolific number of second homers that have now infiltrated this town. True?
Hmm I think it's more based on the kind of house that's here.
Well.
Smaller house?
Yeah, smaller house, smaller lots, like.
The.
You know, actually, actually, so many, such a high percentage of um people in Minter. Live in their houses full time versus Eagle County. Um I'm not sure um. That we really are um justified in thinking that the Eagle, just because the Eagle County. Um houses have larger lots, that they are using more water than the average. Uh Minter house. Because if you have kids, if you live there, if you have a home office, you know. Um if you're gonna use a lot more and you're there six hundred fifty days a year, you're gonna use a lot more water. Um but the the other thing, point I made and and maybe nobody else agrees with me. But um it does seem to me that if the decision has been made to um change. The tier struc- the struc- tier structure from being per SFE to being per house. What is the charge for the second SFE um that ha- houses? Larger houses are are paying, what is that for? Um because they're not getting any credit for that extra amount of money that they're paying. Um with the assumption that they're using more water. Um and I I I think we should correct for this. In some way, I think we can can do it in a fair way. Um so everybody is is being charged. Um so nobody is paying more than anybody else. Except for maybe the high outdoor water users.
The the problem is, is then there's no um. There's no effect on conservation. They're paying the same rate and using fifteen thousand gallons. Uh. There's no conservation. They have no incentive. To change their landscaping or change their behavior and bring it down uh to the lower tiers.
No, no, you don't understand what I I know, they need the tier structure, so they need the incentive. I'm not, I'm not arguing against that. I'm all for tier structure. I'm just saying that there should be some consideration or credit given. For the uh that extra charge they're paying every um. Every month, but no, they should definitely be penalized if they use more water. I I totally agree with that.
The structure.
Okay.
That SFE breakdown was originally derived on the tap fee. Concept, correct?
The the SFE uh cost. Was originally brought in from ERWSD. So that's how ERWSD. Is billing their residential rates is they have a two SFE house gets two base rate charges.
Right.
And but there is then the multiplier is removed, so everybody pays the same volumetric rate.
Which is what we're proposing here.
That's right.
Right, but the eagle, the difference is it's only forty dollars a month for an SFE in Eagle County. It's a hundred and seventeen dollars for a SFE in uh Minter.
Unfortunately, the reason for that was what was discussed earlier is we're just a. Substantially smaller municipality with an entire utility to pay for and less rate payers.
Yeah.
Basically.
Right, and that's why we wait, we raised the cost of a SFE. Acquiring an SFE is a super expensive deal. And we pay that upfront. It's a monthly charge I'm talking about.
I don't know that uh. Until September, our water situation is resolved and money is. Paid for, that we could afford to walk this back.
Uh like I always said, we pay on a timing issue with our revenue. Uh we've got three projects underway, but it uh they don't totally pay off until they're done. We do get TAPs upfront, but we don't get the SIF fees, which are much usually larger.
I mean, I don't disagree with Lynn. Unfortunately. It's not something I think is viable until years down the road when we can revisit the SFE fees. When we are coming along with a functional system that's been paid for. Unfortunately. So the only thing we have in our pocket right now is to revisit. Driving behavior, incentivizing and rewarding behavior in regards to consumption. And that's about all the tools we have at the moment.
Maybe a suggestion on how to present this when we come back, because all these numbers can turn you sideways pretty quick. Um. I've seen presentations where you could like take an at like an average account or like. Joe Smith that lives, you know, in Minter and uses this much water, then. Now Jane Smith lives over here and uses this much water and kind of show like a comparison like. Under the previous system, their bill is this. Under the proposed system, their bill is this. And that kind of would help people kind of understand what the. When you say like, say, you know, the average person might save, like what does that actually look like? So this this person uses three thousand gallons a month. And then in the summer uses six thousand and waters their lawn. Their bill will do this to this. Um and that that might help people. It might help us, you know, also kind of show the public like, help do a picture, like what is this actually gonna do? What's the impact on me?
I agree with that.
Then to add to the nonlinear bell curve game. When we come back and talk quantities hypothetically, if we're talking residential, zero four, really cheap. Four to seven. It's a lot more expensive and then seven and above is really rude. So it's just this.
And so we wanna have the total volumetric somewhere in one seventy-seven thousand, I guess.
Yes, that's that for the residential side, our goal is to generate about the same amount of volume volumetric revenue. The whole purpose of this discussion is to get your feedback so we can model different, different. You know, structures that get to some of the concerns that you raised.
I guess I have a fear of. Everybody just shuts off their outside watering and everybody's taking advantage of zero to three. You're actually accomplishing water conservation, but you're not getting a hundred seventy-seven thousand. So then all of a sudden, the twenty twenty-five budget comes around and you see all those numbers. Oh, we gotta raise our base rate because operating expenses more.
Therein lies the problem with encouraging too much conservation. Because the cost of running the utility.
Still the same.
Still the same.
Yep.
There is a drop off a little bit because you're not producing as much water. You don't need to produce as much water. But the real cost is just having the plant there and the infrastructure in the ground. To be able to deliver however much water people want. And that's that's the really hard part about. You know, coming up with a rate structure that encourages conservation. Um you know, I in my past experience dealing with similar things. One of the chief complaints, and this was on the sewer side, is you know, I I put in all these energy efficient toilets and this, that, and the other thing in my buildings. Well, we still have to pay for the plant. We still have to pay for the water or the sewer mains or the water mains in the ground. So the cost structure remains the same. There's a a small component that changes with a lower volumetric use.
And and the Climate Action Collaborative has identified that the major water use in the county is turf.
Hmm.
Um by large, large amount, so it may. You know, may require, I mean, I we've been zero escaping for almost eight or nine years now. May not be as pretty as as if we'd like it to be, but it's. That's why we don't work work as hard at it, but it's, you still got flowers, you still got native grasses, but you can make. You can make zero escaping extremely attractive. Matter of fact, if you go to the website, you'll see examples, they're escaping, they're escaping, that's just absolutely gorgeous.
Should we ask the Eagle River Fire District for any? Input on Gussie's concern about, you know, if people start not watering. Input on Gussie's concern about, you know, if people start not watering, are they worried about that?
That or not, uh, but I, um, climate action might, might have it, the CAC may have it. Because they, they deal with objections to change all the time. And um, and they're, and they're always very transparent in their information, so. Maybe you could, that's the question.
I think it would be really helpful, um, and like Brian suggested, to have some real examples of, of. And it would be helpful to the public too, to understand really what this is going to mean to them. Um, in terms of savings or additional expense. Um, if we may, i- if, if we had like five or six different. Examples of what it is now versus what it would be under what we propose.
And we can do that.
Staff have enough great discussion.
Yes.
Can we move on?
Yes.
Okay, so we're now without the scratching, we'll move on to the next item, which is. Uh, yes, let's take a recess. Okay, we're back from recess and our next item on the agenda, this is a discussion item of the Downtown Development Authority.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So fortunately for me, I have uh Downtown Development Authority Bill Schrum. With me from Downtown Colorado Inc., and I also have Jim Mann with me who has done. An analysis of the downtown area, a financial analysis of the downtown area over the next thirty years?
Yes.
Thirty years. So this has been an ongoing uh. Exercise for the town over the last several years to determine if there is a value to bringing a downtown development authority. Uh, to Mintern in a mapped area of the downtown, and that mapped area has not yet been determined. Uh, the concept, and Bill, I'm gonna give this in my very layman's terms, and you can correct me uh with all of the things I get wrong. Uh, but the concept of a downtown development authority is to keep. Uh, future property tax revenues beyond a certain baseline that's established. In the town of Mintern and specifically the downtown for the downtown users. To have for making improvements to the downtown area, and that list of types of improvements that can be made. Uh, is varying and Bill can get into that, but I believe uh they determine that. Uh, at a certain point in time as the downtown development authority is created. So this is, it's not like the construction use tax, because this is not a new tax. But this is similar in the concept of keeping revenues in Mintern for Mintern value and benefit. So Bill can get into this a little bit further, but what we saw is that our downtown is in need of some help. It's in need of some coordination. Uh, staff does not have the, the bandwidth to be a, a downtown. Uh, uh, development authority administrator or even someone, you know, part-time to help coordinate all of the amazing things that could be occurring. With our downtown, you know, uh, uh, wayfinding signage and bench improvements and like the bicycle parking and. Uh, of restrooms and a wide variety of other things, parking that could be used in our downtown area. Off of the property tax revenues that come in over a certain baseline. So council has been supportive of this uh throughout this process thus far, but we've continued to check in with council as we've gone along. At our last check-in, council uh had again given a thumbs up and said. Okay, now we need to get this financial analysis from which we got a first financial analysis that didn't. Uh, proved to provide all of the details we needed, so we brought Jim Mann in. And he has provided us with a, a much more thorough financial analysis showing that there are. A variety of different conceptual scenarios that could bring funds in over the thirty-year timeframe that we're reviewing. So with those funds, it would then be determined by uh the Downtown Development Authority Board. I, I, I point to the audience because there are business owners in the downtown and business owners. Yes, business owners in the downtown would make up the board to determine what those improvements would look like, so it's really a way to give more local control. Uh, so Bill, with that, I look for you to correct uh things that I got wrong or add things that I missed, please.
Yeah, thank you, and uh, thank you council and uh to the mayor, it's good to see you all again. Um, the only addition I would make uh to the description there is that we're, what was uh mainly described is called tax increment financing. And um, as Michelle had described, the baseline would be set based on the current um. Taxing um, revenue rates of what is coming in and is adjusted. According to what the county assessor would determine to be the regular growth of the community uh property value. So in that sense, that is unchanged. The increment that would be coming in is the development that is caused by the activity of the Downtown Development Authority. And that increment is one hundred percent. As uh, as Michelle had described, brought back into the district to be spent on things like uh infrastructure, public improvements and the like.
We had this place two years ago, we would make bank on, on the difference of assessments and so forth.
Yes and no.
Yeah.
No.
Uh, because when the uh growth is due to inflation or just. Standard appreciation of prices, typically what happens is the assessor will put that in, back into the base value. They will not add, they, it will not be created as an increment value, value. Um, so just because assessments go up um from inflationary factors or appreciation. Doesn't necessarily mean that that equates to increment that would be available. That's a, that's, that's a kind of, when you look at tax increment across the country. Colorado isn't necessarily unique that way, but they're much more strict about not allowing. Or, or requiring the base value to increase as appreciation occurs.
The increment.
The increment, so, and, and Bill can jump in here as well. Is Jay yelling at me again?
Not yet.
Not yet, okay, sorry Jay. Um, so the increment is generated based on, okay, let's just, you know. Say the, you know, the, the base value of the one hundred block is ten million dollars. And that's land and structures included. So that, that's the base value, and so somebody comes in and says they're gonna uh make improvements to a building. And all of a sudden, you know, that, that building.
They're gonna build a distillery on a vacant lot.
They're gonna build a distillery on a vacant lot, and now all of a sudden that. Distillery's value is a million and a half dollars. So now the total value of the downtown one hundred block is eleven million five hundred thousand dollars. The increment value is one million five hundred thousand dollars. And that taxed the same as all the other properties in the town. But on that million five hundred thousand dollars, all the tax revenue. Basically stays in the downtown development district or authority. To be used to offset improvement costs.
Understood, thank.
Okay, and those improvement costs can be just about, Bill, you wanna add anything to that?
Yeah, I'll, I'll um, just say that, you know, I, I, hearing the conversations earlier and knowing. Uh, the concerns that the town has about water, if there are uh improvements to the water system. That serves the downtown, that would obviously instigate additional development. Um, you can very much make a case for how that kind of infrastructure investment. Would also count towards the development and increment that could be generated uh for TIF.
So we have a hundred block here, because that's just a. Snapshot area that we did the analysis on, but I'm assuming this is not. Limited to the hundred block, when we define downtown. Development Authority span of blocks in the area, considering the. Chapter sixteen rewrite with mixed use, et cetera. So is this from Meadow Mountain all the way to? Weston?
Uh, council of the town were mainly focusing on the one hundred block, uh, but we're, they weren't. I guess we were uh looking at it as the best test area to do and see how this thing worked and then expand from there. If you could take that, Michelle.
Because individual property owners will vote on this, and so in order to. Uh, well, Bill, correct me, property owners, leaseholders? Thank you. And so we wanted to start it small, because we really wanted to make sure we had a, a grasp of what we were covering. However, the, the area that we start with itself will, will play a lot into what the business owners want to see. So how many people are supportive of a downtown development authority? How many people want their properties included in a downtown development authority? So we really, over the last two years, have been focused on the, the one hundred block. I would say in the, there would be a great value in getting that initial downtown development authority passed. If that's something that's of interest to the council and the business owners. And the leaseholders, and then the ability to expand upon that would then be open for those who wanted to join in.
And we could, like, let me ask you this question, or Bill. Okay, so we've kind of designated an area, but. You know, the um. What's that funny little carpet company over there? Oh, the Scarra. Uh, yeah, that's not on the one hundred block, but it is directly adjacent, so it makes sense to, to add that to it. Because I think they would probably want to be a part of that. And other, any other commercial. Buildings that are immediately adjacent, versus the saloon across the river and.
And Eagle River Inn.
Eagle River Inn and, and the uh, Mexican Bar and Grill and those kind of places, so I think those should all. If they want to be, be in the DDA. And then, but if they're all for it, then that's why not do that.
Well, that's what I'm suggesting. Because now you're doing a one-off, so then brings back the question, this current test cell. My opinion, I understand Michelle's take on it, but considering a good chunk of it is now ghost town or will be. Uh, so there are property owners that have invested interest in it, but I would wanna cast a wider net. For the very reason you just said. So to just say, we're just gonna include Larry on the other side of the street of Scarra, but we're not gonna talk to Kirby's. We're not gonna talk to the saloon, I think they should all be all, right off of that.
So, well, I, yeah, and it depends, because we have a, you know, how long is it gonna take to, to do all of the work? To get the whole town deciding whether they want to do it, be, be a part of something. And uh, so this is, I mean, this is one section of our town. Uh, and, and not that everybody considers the, the other things I just mentioned as the downtown of, of Mintern. Uh, and, and once we get that set up and going and moving and it's, and we decide this is a good thing. Then I, as far as I'm concerned, any commercial entity that wants to be a part of it. Uh, Bill, how does that work as far as you're concerned? Uh, would you, would you start off with a trial and then get, get, uh, if it works, then. You know, we got uh restaurants down on the four, five hundred block of uh Main Street. And we can just individually go business by business and they can join in. Does that make sense?
Uh, there, there are some restrictions to that, but these discussions are exactly what uh, what you'd want to be discussing at this point. So my recommendation at this point, and I think um Michelle was going to tee this up, is what would come next, is that. You would want to conduct a s- uh stakeholder outreach to the businesses to see. You know, if you understand what the district is about, is this something that you would be interested in? And obviously, being that you have the property owners and the leaseholders, both. If a district is included residential, you know, properties, those residential uh tenants would have a vote. Generally, you have to include a majority of the commercial district. Um, but that being said, the stakeholders within a proposed district would vote in a special election. And so it's important to do the stakeholder outreach ahead of time to get a sense of, you know, who would want to be a part of that and would this pass? If it's created, as again Michelle has said, being able to add additional uh. Lots would take a petition of the property owner to the DDA and for the DDA to accept the petition. The key though is that you have to be contiguous, and so you cannot, while you can include right-of-way. So if you do a flagpole along town right-of-way to include that in the boundary, you can use that as a, as a way of providing continuity. Uh, but otherwise, unfortunately, you can't necessarily hop from block to block. Uh, unless there's some other uh congruity within the district.
Okay. Like the saloon would be continuous. That's why we were considering them, because it's a contiguous section directly over Bell and Bridge. Potentially, improvements to Bell and Bridge would fall under what this would cover. If it makes that more accessible as part of the DDA. I believe that would be correct, I'd look to Bill.
That is correct, yes.
Similar to, it covers improvements to water systems that serve the downtown.
But that board would have to approve the use of that money for that purpose, so they might say, well, that's, this is the town bridge, like not, you know, but a public square. Like they might say, okay, this is gonna benefit us.
So if we have a section of Main Street, uh, that kind of thing, starting with Rocky Mountain Taco, and then you have old commercial area. Drop and hop and that kind of thing, but then you have the barbecue place and uh. Crazy Chicken and those, if they could, with that, and they're down, you know, four blocks away from where we're talking about now. Uh, would, would, have you had towns that actually did more than one DDA, so they could form their own DDA?
You are limited to only having one within the entire city, so the city of Denver only has a single DDA. That, the, the DDA is the most flexible economic development district within the statute of, in Colorado. It has access to the most tools, but the limit is that you can only have one.
So then contiguous is not totally accurate, when we think in terms of. Linkage, real estate wise. So back to what I'm suggesting, which is. There are some pretty substantial, significant businesses within Mintern that do not fall in the defined hundred block. That should be involved, as you said, just a stakeholder survey from the outset.
But didn't he just say they have to be continuous?
Right, but if Denver has one DDA.
But it's just for that, it's not.
You're, you're saying like if Mintern South wanted to form one, they're like, why does downtown?
He's suggesting multiple DDAs, which he's saying we cannot do. I'm just driving at the fact that. You, you're saying it has to be contiguous, literally, there can't be any intermixing of residential.
No, it, it can't, it, it can't, yeah, and the Denver DDA is actually Union Station. So the development around Union Station is the only, is the district of the Denver DDA. The, uh, a proposed district within Mintern could include some residential uh units or, or lots. If the rest of, of the majority of the zoning is business minded. So you cannot have it be a majority residential, but as long as it's a majority commercial, you can have some. Uh, residential lots. In, in the town of Eagle, where, where I was at previously to joining DCI. We had created a, the Downtown Development Authority in Eagle, and it did have half of one block that was residential. Because there were uh legacy homeowners on that lot, but the lot was then uh planned to be zoned commercial, though it had not yet. So those residential units were included within the DDA, so there, there are scenarios where that happens.
Is, is there a reason to keep it small, so that like, I'm just picturing myself if I'm a. Kirby's or Crazy Chicken owner, and most of the district is made of people on the hundred block, and they say, hey, we wanna do a cool town square down here. And on the Crazy Chicken, and they're going, whoa. How does that help me up here on the other side of town? Is there, is there an advantage to like trying to keep it as. Geographically compact as possible in order to make projects happen, or?
Yeah.
Kind of have a common goal, or I don't know what, what's that?
That's another great question. So part of the stakeholder outreach, and I think part of the discussion strategically with the staff and. And with you all as the council, is that very question. There are advantages to having a smaller DDA. Part of that is that unlike an urban renewal authority that can start different districts, the entirety of the district is included. If there happens to be something that devalues uh property value within the district, that. That is a net negative on the district total increment. Right? So if you draw a district that's too large. You have the potential of, of, um. Watering down the potential increment, right? So if you are targeted in areas where you know that you're going to be able to instigate development. You have a much more likely opportunity for generating increment and having that be productively used. So that's part of the trade off. The other side of it, and, and not just the inclusion of the core businesses, but. You, you can only build and use these funds within the district. So if infrastructure, water, sewer. Uh, streets, so on, is a core, uh, agenda item for these funds. If you have a key area that needs to, to be addressed. You really need to be sure that you're including those areas within the district. So that you have the viability to use these funds for that project. And so that's kind of the trade off that, um. You know, given, given the blessing from the council, uh, my recommendation is that we do some more strategic outreach and. Uh, stakeholder discussions to understand who might be in, who might be out. And strategically, what, what should be included in a potential district?
Bill, just a quick clarification.
Yes.
The, while the projects that you're using the dollars for need to be spent within the district, that does not. Preclude you from spending dollars on a water treatment plant. Or a wastewater treatment plant.
Yeah. So, uh, the, and that's a great clarification, uh, question. I'll, I'll put the asterisk in there that I'm, I'm not a lawyer. So please do not take what I'm going to say as legal advice. But you do have the ability to spend money outside of the district. Only insofar as that you were providing service necessary to complete work within the district. Right? So if the intention was to upscale your water service within the district. But doing so required that you do infrastructure investment. In the water system outside of the district. It is my understanding that you are able to use TIF funds to do that.
Because there would be a, a real value for the downtown development, downtown area to be able to start. Looking at real redevelopment in certain situations where it's not considered his historical.
I, I have a question. Is there? Any reason why a business owner wouldn't want to agree to be part of a DDA?
In, uh, in the town of Frazier, where we were helping them pass a DDA here in April. Uh, one of the complaints or, or I guess a, an opposition point of view from. Business owners was that they feared that this would cause their property values to rise faster than what they would normal.
It's a basic improvements being made to the area.
So out of curiosity, what most DDAs, the number one primary objective. On a positive standpoint, my DDA is to do what?
Uh, to drive vertical, vertical developer. So it's not so much about the horizontal, um, though it is important to get infrastructure in the ground. It's to, to add and to fill out vertical development. And, um, I would say the, the, and, uh. Priority one B is that as you do so. Being that these funds are specifically, uh, intentioned to be spent. According to a plan of development set and approved. By, uh, you all as the council. There must be a public benefit component to these funds. So if you choose to add public art, or if you choose to increase connectivity or increase infrastructure, uh. You know, viability. That is part of what would happen with the vertical improvement. Um, that you don't, that you don't normally have a chance to facilitate. Uh, should you not have these funds available to work with development?
So if, if we were concerned on like, okay, let's try to get more. Real estate into this DDA. Uh, we've got a whole bunch of residential between the downtown and. The commercial priority we've been talking about, uh, further south. How, and they, and let's say they, the residential is also, yeah, let's do it. How does that? And I'm not worried about those properties devaluing, um. Which I think you said was probably the worst side of that. So when you said watered down, was it also because we're trying to get commercial development and they would be wanting to get siding for their house? From the DDA, that kind of a thing. How does that work?
In, in some respects, I'd say that depends on what is approved within the plan of development. So, um, as I mentioned before, these funds do have a limit on what you can spend and that's. And that limit is defined by the plan of development. Um, generally approved by, it's initially crafted and, and approved by the DDA board, but ultimately approved by the council. Before it is put into practice. And if that plan of development says that it is commercially significant for residential facades. To have the opportunity to use some of these funds for improvement. Then you can spend your money on that. If you choose not to put that in the plan of development, that would not be an opportunity for them to, to spend. Uh, again, one thing I would mention though, uh. Mister Mayor is that you do have the opportunity of including right of ways and, and public eastments. And so. I know, uh, that Main Street there is, uh, a public right of way. And as long as there's, um, is, is it devolved and owned by the town or is that C dot property?
C dot.
If C dot, if C dot was agreeable to having that, that right of way included in, in the DDA district. Uh, the roadway right of way could be included. Without necessarily having to include the parcels adjacent.
It makes me question the bike path to, uh, Dow Junction. Those are the microphone state, my name. Larry Stone, one fifty-two Main Street. One of the nice things about it being downtown and, um. Would be for the transportation element, which I know you sit on, on the board. And I think about the hub that potentially could happen. At Dow Junction, and I think that would be a critical component. We could somehow incorporate that. So I think about, uh, infrastructure, does that include transportation? Um, wh- whether it was bus systems or bike paths. If that would be, um, a factor that could help us.
Yeah, it's a, it's good to hear your voice, Larry. Uh, I'm glad you're there. Um, and it's been too long since we've seen each other. Um, that, that's pretty astute. Um, this transportation and transfers. Transportation infrastructure can qualify as long as that's been put in the planet development.
Cause our main street is a highway. So would that take care of the south end businesses then? Would that be a contin- and contiguous, uh, element?
And if, if C dot as the property ownership was, uh. Uh, amenable to having it included. I mean, at the same time, I guess you could draw the lines and have them be a potential voting party and have them vote no. It would depend on what the overall, uh, vote would be. Um, all of the, all of that to be said, um, I. Again, caution, what I'm saying is, are things that I have seen put in practice, but in every community, there's always the opportunity for some nuance that. Legally, I'm not aware of. So. You know, let's, let's check with the lawyers before we bring you anything certain. Um, but if you do look at other DDAs around the state. There are flagpoles and other uses of right of way that are a part of the continuity plan, um, within the district.
Okay.
So at this point, staff is looking for councils either support to continue this effort. Or, uh, rejection of this concept and we will stop altogether. But we want to continue to check in with the council throughout this process. So this is an, an additional check in for us. Before we go and then start working with stakeholders at the business community. Uh, to determine if there's a real interest with the stakeholders to go to a vote this November.
Feel like there's an interest from the business community, business community that's here.
I need to go back up there?
You just say yes.
Yes, there is an interest. But we also want to know. With the money that the town spent to do an analysis, what are we looking at? What are, what are the potential of, of gains of what? We've been looking at.
So, um, that's actually a really good question. So we. I was charged with looking at some redevelopment concepts and what potential could be there. And so. When looking at concepts. I approached it from, okay, what's going to engender somebody to come in and do more of a larger scale redevelopment? And then what's the maximum that they're going to do on, on the property? And so we looked at three, uh, areas. That could be, you could basically white plane and start over. And, uh, the assumption was you were looking at first floor commercial. And second, uh, floor residential. And then under the, uh, downtown district rules. You can have what's called an incentive floor if you meet a couple of criteria. So you can go to a third floor. And so we looked at what would happen if some of these areas were wholesale redevelopment. Lots were combined. Um, what would be the, the net benefit? And you would add, you know, any, you know, any number of residents and a lot of commercial space. Um, our, our estimate. Um, on basically three wholesale redevelopment areas and then a couple of small miscellaneous areas. Ranged from a market value low, and this is added value. Of about twenty-two million to a high of about forty million. So that equates to an assessed value. Of somewhere between about three and a half million and about six million. And that was based upon looking at. You know, some of the values that are in the downtown area now. Um, but kind of going to more of the maximum. So there, there would be a, a couple of things that would happen as you combine lots. Uh, you would increase their value, the land value. Um, and so that land value, we, we kind of pegged at about a hundred and twenty-five dollars a square foot. Um, the commercial space, we estimated values at about two hundred and fifty dollars a square foot. And then on the residential space, we were at about seven hundred dollars a square foot. And so that's how we came to those numbers. And that's a, that's just an example. And there, you know, we had, and I wish we could like. Pull it up and put it up on a screen somewhere, but there were, there was three distinct combinations of, of various lots. That allowed for a larger redevelopment. And then there were a couple of small, single, single lot redevelopments. And I think one of them was the, the assumption of the vacant lot that is going to become a distillery.
Did, did those, um, were those, um, examples involved demolition of historic buildings?
Well, that's a, that's a nuance that, um, with the, the town's historic preservation ordinance that does. Uh, create a nuance that you have to deal with. Um, the assumption was. A cop, there would be demolition of existing structures, whether those are historic or not. Is, that's a, up to the town's designation in terms of whether they are or not. We did not, I don't remember what the two lots that you're moving on to be historic.
Those got left alone.
Those got, we left those alone. Um, which I, if I remember correctly in our conversations, that was the catalyst for the historic pre- preservation ordinance. We didn't touch those. But there were others that I have the beholder, somebody might claim is a historic structure that might impede some of that redevelopment.
Good. Jim, could I, could I add to that for just a second?
Sure.
Um, regarding historic structures. Um, any funds or I'm sorry, backing up a second. Should the DDA and for the Minter and Council choose to include. Um, the efforts to help support historic preservation as a community value within the district. If that is included within the plan of development. There are TIF funds that could be used to help bridge the gap between the market rate and the cost of development. To maintain historic preservation guidelines that you've sat within the town. To help the, the redevelopment costs. Because we know that historic preservation sometimes does carry an additional cost burden on development. That could be, if set by the council, one of the things that the TIF funds could be used for.
May I speak to that? Larry Stone, one fifty-two Main Street. Uh, unfortunately. The property at one fifty-two Main Street and at one fifty-six Main Street. Were both, um, appraised because of personal situations to, to put a value to them. It was a very big struggle for the professional appraiser who's been doing it for over twenty years, uh, to come up with. A proper value. And what he explained to me was. You have a conflicting scenario. Your house is used as residential. But the laws have been, uh, set forth that if you sell that property, it needs to become commercial. And the value of the commercial versus the value of residential are extremely different. And what we learned. Um, and there were many council members here from the, the last professionals that came in. And we were looking at the one hundred block that commercial. On its own is not viable, that you have to have residential to support the development of the commercial. So essentially we have conflicting goals of historic preservation. Uh, of houses, wait. Structures that were meant to be houses. That have been businesses because the rent rates were extraordinarily low. And kept that way by a family who held ownership for decades. Uh, now has changed hands and they're going through more, uh, hands being changed. So the values are going up. Their rent rates are going up and it will be near impossible. To have a commercial viable economic situation in a small historic property that's seven, eight hundred square feet. Um, and if you have limitations of what you can do. Um, because you don't have a foundation to put the residential above, you put the onus. And the burden on the property owner and it's already, um, a difficult situation. So. I'm not going to, um, bellow into the wind about. How historical preservation can be in conflict with economic development. But the segue was there for me to step into. So. That's all.
And, and one thing that, um. I've been doing a lot of thinking about, about that as well, uh, and. I think, um. I, I'd like to have, we're, the reason that, uh. The town designated these two houses was we're stuck. Right? We're not moving forward. We're not going back. These kind of concerns are being, uh, are not being addressed and there maybe it's made everybody shy of, of developing. Uh, anything in the one hundred block, which was of course the goal that we were trying to achieve. Uh, and so. It has occurred to me. Um, that we need to, to look at, and this is what we're going to do through this process. Uh, with one fifty-one, one sixty-one. Those, I think. Um, and, and that is. The short preservation will, uh, what the, they're up for design, designation is, is, and, uh. And so they're going to go through their processes. And then it comes to planning and arts, but it ends here. And I'm trying to figure out how important. Exact historical structures are compared to how important. That we have development in the one hundred block. That is absolutely consistent with the character that we expect, uh, that we. See as mentor. In other words, the, you know. One, one fifty-one is, uh, you know, which was the uptown store is, is an old house. Um, there's compromises that could be made. I'm not an architect. I don't know how, exactly how that could be done, but. It'll be up to the council to have the decision of. They come up with a, a, a plan of redeveloping the house. Perhaps they can, uh, get the, maintain the historic preservation by moving that house up. To the sidewalk because it's the zero front set back there. And allow a big struck, bigger structure in the back with residential over it. You know, that it, something like that, you know, to where they, they, they now have a project, a piece of property. That they can actually have, do so and without losing money. Uh, and that's a, I'm, that's a very terrible example to use, but. That's what I'm looking at is, and. that's what I'm looking at is and cause really, I think most people want to maintain the character of it too. Well, you know, those how uh couple, the couple of how, three or four of the houses have been there a long time. But there's a lot of houses there that were just built because that was over a different era. If you look at the old photographs, I've 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 had the thought that maybe we look at like where the country club is now, hopefully rats is and see this and freak out on me. But um you know, that was the mercantile bit business and it was two or three stories, how how high was that thing? Was it two stories, Gusty? Two stories, it was all rock wall all the way up and it had character, unforgettable character to it. And then it got, you know, restructured and it just don't look anything. It doesn't look anything. But anyway, so there's, those are the kind of things I'm saying, okay, so if it turns out that uh that there's a structure like that and uh the bones of it are old, but everything else is different. And it's not a character with the with the town. Do we wanna go ahead and allow whoever buys that lot to redevelop it in a way where it looks more like a Minter than was there? Well, that's so, that's my thinking.
But that feeds into the whole argument about the current guidelines of the historic preservation piece and why it exists. And I would segue to if you ask most business owners what they think a DDA is supposed to do. First off, the redevelopment of the yellow and green, which could arguably be translated to a scrape is gonna run into a buzzsaw of opposition. The I'm not even going there with that right now, but most business owners would expect you mean revitalization, streamlining of processes and uh ordinances and and procedures to incentivize development in a flourishing downtown business district. And as you allude to right here, clearly uh when you talked about two significant impacts and one of them was our historic reservation ordinance adds another layer for any redevelopment issue and the bigger issue um is the hesitation for anybody to come in here and wanna do anything. Because of the uncertainty and the bureaucratic process that currently exists. So one of the things we talked about was trying to streamline and look at a myriad of structures, starting with a hundred block to be able to give a thumbs up and a thumbs down. Cause arguably, the country club, for example, is a tear down at this point, because unfortunately, the property owner has done a miserable job of maintaining, as the tenant would explain over and over again, if you had hours of opportunity to say so. So I'm just driving to the fact that one of the areas that has to happen in conjunction with anything with a DDA is to revisit streamlining some of these processes. Cause that's what the stakeholders are gonna want. Some level of certainty to move forward one direction or another, whether that means taking the uptown store and moving it to the sidewalk, whatever, but those are, those are things right now that proposal under our current historic preservation process would fail miserably. But most of us are maybe not in agreement with that. But it goes back to the keep Minter and Minter and I got it. But again, I allude to the current shuttered buildings on the hundred block as we see them right now. And what's gonna happen to those two s- two buildings right now? Nothing.
Bill, any, any comments on what this little back and forth being taught here?
Yeah, I mean, I I I think I would just uh reiterate the point that I made before about um the expectations of the business community are important and ultimately, when you're able to lower risk um and be more predictable in your process, I think that's, that's always going to open the door for more opportunity for development. If it is important and deemed important by the council that historic preservation steps uh be made, um as as long as that's within the plan of development, the opportunity to use TIF funds to help bridge the gap between the expectations to meet those development guidelines and the market rate cost of doing that work. If there's a gap and TIF is able to help fill that gap to make the projects happen, ultimately, it's an opportunity for for the DDA to help meet the 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 vision of the community for what you wanna see in downtown Minter.
And a chicken before the egg or how does, how does that help? All right, I wasn't standing up there.
Yeah. Yeah, well, simply in the, in the sense that if there's a demonstrative gap or, you know, I'll I'll take the scenario that the mayor had been talking about if, if uh if ordinance and planning process had deemed that uh a a parcel or a structure needed to be lifted from its foundation and and moved uh up to the lot line and that was to cost X amount of money, you could make a case as a developer to say, I'm going to apply for a TIF reimbursement or that, you know, talk to the town about getting a reimbursement plan in place to help cover some of those costs that are otherwise uh seen as an additional cost of doing work in town to meet the town's development code. So if that's what the the development code says needs to happen and that's something within the plan of development that TIF is allowed to help support, being able to use some of those funds to help the developer bridge that market rate gap makes achieving some of those historic uh guidelines a little bit more attainable therein making some of these projects more viable than they would be before.
Right, I, so a few things like it it seems like chicken before the egg, you're saying, it's like, we're, we're trying to create this thing that like it sounds great and everything would be, you know, sounds like good solid financial background to it and everything, but we've also got this like diametrically opposed kind of part of town or and some actions that would basically like limit the impact of it, right? So like until we kind of figure out like what exactly are we uh gonna allow and consider as redevelopment on the hundred block, like are we, are we cool with scraping a house that was built out of a catalog that's been there for a long time and allow them to build a three-story structure that is in a similar style? And has residential and commercial and has opportunities and creates that tax value? Because if not, then we shouldn't waste our time with this because if if we form the development district, but then turn around and say, well, no one's allowed to touch anything on the hundred block, then it's just all a waste of time. So I think we need to kind of get our get ourselves figured out on the direction of the historical preservation in that area and the code in that area where that's gonna run and have a vision for it, like you said. And then this sounds like a great tool. If that's what we decide we want is more redevelopment in the area and vertical redevelopment.
Great question. But seventy five years or older.
One six, one sixty one does not.
Okay, so so back to the DDA, I think, I think um Michelle is desperately want, go ahead, Spencer.
Spencer, uh four 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 Eagle Street, um my concern with what Brian's saying is we don't form the DDA and redevelopment does happen, you've missed out on that increment.
Oh, yeah.
So it does need to be formed first.
I'm not disagreeing with it at all. If anything, I'm just driving at more stakeholders, as is already alluded to. Apparently, step one is to go forth and ask all the state, potential stakeholders where you at on that. And then secondly, it would be as rapidly as possible, reset the rules on the playing field, so everybody knows what the deal is and then you purchase something and we move the goalposts. That's absurd.
And the other question I have is if we can't, if um if we're limited to one DDA, um wouldn't we really like a DDA in Dow Junction? Wouldn't wouldn't that make more sense?
That could be what's young.
Okay, so I think, I think, I think we all want the DDA. Uh it's just a matter of allowing Michelle to 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 get to work on it, but uh you know, the 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 highway twenty four slash Main Street could be a flagpole, we don't know for sure. Bill thinks it might be, might be possible. If that's it, then that's what we could do, but um anyway, um.
I had one specific question about DDAs that I wanted to clarify. I, this came up when, four, five months ago, I don't know how many.
Oh, no, it was near year.
Came out a while ago. Um and I, we've been like looking through this, trying to remember this, but it seems like in my head that there was something about a requirement of like an administrator working for the DDA and
Yes.
At a cost that's then like how much of a yearly cost is that? And or that can that be like an IGA between the town and help to fund part, a part position or something like what's, what's the commitment on that?
The revenue would fund it.
If there's revenue. I mean, yeah, but like, yeah, but you know, like our development district might not raise, you know, maybe it raises a hundred grand a year for a while or I don't know what it is and you spend half of that on an admin or what's, what's the?
Yeah, Bill, maybe you could address that.
Sure. Yeah, um again, that's all of, all of what was said is exactly true. Um in the town of Eagle, the way that was set up was that uh myself as the assistant town manager would serve as the interim uh executive director of the DDA. The executive director role is required to be staffed, though it could be done through an IGA with the town as splitting town staff, but that was designed as only a temporary measure until the revenues were able to stand alone. Um there are other ways that uh similar to like a business improvement district. You can have outside management assigned and have that done on a contractual basis, but that would still qualify um as an executive director, so there are a variety of ways of being able to fulfill that role at a rate that would fit whatever the town is able to um to negotiate for for whatever work is done. I would imagine if there's not a lot of development work that's being done, then the rate cost of hiring an executive director should probably match the the amount of work that's coming in. Uh but that's not to marginalize the intention. Um as as Michelle had said at the very beginning, that ultimately, when the DDA is able to really stand on its own, to have it pay for itself and pay for the staff who's able to do a lot of this work uh so that the town staff is not necessarily the ones who are spending their time on it.
The DDA is formed, does uh the general fund take a hit? Like, do they get less money?
No.
Than before? Okay, so all self-tax and all the property tax values still goes back with the you know, the assessed value and stuff?
Yeah, there's, there's literally no impact based on on whatever baseline assessment is is determined. Once that uh filing is sent to the county assessor, whatever budget is administered based on the collections based on that, not just for the town, but for all of the other districts, Eagle, River Water and Sand, Fire District, you name it. Um those stay exactly the same. So there's no impact to the budget um based on the creation of a DDA.
Okay, is that, but you'd say there's no impact, it's not gonna like cost them anything, but there's an opportunity cost potentially, right? So like say a redevelopment was gonna happen anyway and the tax revenue increased, that money would be going to the town and instead that money would be going to the DDA.
That's right. Well, um well, to be fair, um in Eagle, I'm not sure exactly what what Minter's assessment is, but in Eagle, I believe it was sixty eight mills total. Um the town was collecting five and change mills. So the town would be collecting the five and change mills without the DDA in place. The increment on future development within the town's DDA is significantly higher than that five mill, right? So for the town, ultimately, um having the DDA in place, you capture significantly more revenue than what the percentage of property value would be, given that, you know, folks like um the Colorado Mountain College was collecting more, more uh property tax uh from property in Eagle than the town was. So generally speaking, the the loss of a hundred percent of that increment is very negligible considering all of the other taxing entities that collect property tax significantly higher than the town.
Beyond Zoom has a question.
I'm sorry.
Think someone on Zoom has a question.
Oh, okay. Jay?
Yes, we have one person with their hand up. Kristen Driscoll has her hand up, hold on just a second. There you go.
Hi, Kristen, can you uh state your name and address, please?
Uh Krista Driscoll. One fifteen Nelson. Sorry about that, I had, well, I'm going on two different devices. Um so I, maybe I missed this, I'm sorry. Um so when I was reading the chart in the packet, it showed that there were different ways that you could do the funding, so you can do the mill, it also mentions sales tax, is that something that the town is considering with the DDA or is it just the mill levy? On or in property tax?
The staff is not recommending any increases to sales tax. We are just we're just looking. Property tax.
Okay. Um and then when the revenue ends, so you know, say we get it all redeveloped, then do you just dissolve the DDA or do you have to continue it on and keep ma- paying administrative fees even when there's no more real revenue to be made from it? How's that work?
Yeah, Bill can probably take this. My quick answer is the DDA uh goes for a timeframe of thirty years with increments that can be added on afterward as needed and voted on. Uh but Bill, I'll let you confirm the accuracy.
Yeah, and and actually one thing too, just to address real quick. Um DDAs are not able to assess a sales tax increase. Um the sales tax shareback would be based on uh sales tax uh a a shareback that of what is already collected by the town, shared back to the district. Um that is something administratively, you can literally do at any time. It's common with DDAs though, because when you have an executive director to manage that sales tax collection, it makes it a lot easier for the council to understand how much would be um revenue shared back to the district, but the district itself cannot assess um or cannot vote to increase sales tax. It's only a shareback on the currently collected revenue. Um to the, to the uh ending of a DDA, uh Michelle is 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 exactly correct. Um the statute itself allows for DDAs to be um existing for thirty years. You do have the opportunity after thirty years to renew for uh a twenty year period of time and that's simply by um by an ordinance. And recently, the um this, the state of Colorado has allowed that after the fifty year period of time, because we do have um the three oldest DDAs in the state, uh Fort Collins, Longmont and Grand Junction are beyond their, um actually beyond forty years old. Um if you're approaching fifty years, you can continue to renew at a twenty year clip with the affirmative action of council. Otherwise, they would inherently with no action of council um dissolve at the end of that period of time. All of that to be said, there are automatic adjustments to the base so that the baseline that you set now is not the baseline set or revenue collected um at those later periods of time. So there, there is some equitable um elements there so that you would be giving some of the benefit to the taxing entities. All of that to be said, the districts that have been around for that long, um they recognize a very significant revenue stream. And um each of the districts that are interested in potentially renewing over fifty years are seeing millions of dollars in TIF coming in every year and they do not have an interest in, as I understand it, they do not have an interest in dissolving. They would like to maintain that revenue stream.
Okay, um. That answer your question, okay, Kristen?
Um I think so, so are you, I get, it's a little confusing, are you stuck with it for at least thirty years or?
It it can be, is a clause.
The
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
Cause that administrative cost is a fixed cost whether you have zero development that year or not.
Hmm.
So thirty years of that, when we're looking at potentially a dozen properties for redevelopment in its first pass.
It is entirely possible to dissolve a DDA with an action of the council uh before the thirty years is up. And there, there have been, I think, one, maybe two instances of that happened.
Okay.
It's pretty rare.
Thank you.
Hmm.
Okay, um we ready to go with Michelle some direction here? I'd like you to thumbs up on uh everybody that wants the DDA to, to continue researching and working on the DDA. Thumbs up. Thumbs up. All right.
So Jay, did you get that?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Uh, thank you very much. And I will just say that, um. Brian hit on a really key points with how the historic preservation. Policies play in to potential future development. And that is gonna be a question that is gonna have to come to the council for decision-making as these properties get nominated. And sometimes there is a value in nominating a property solely for the purpose of understanding that it will not be designated. As a historical structure, if that's the case, so that then it, it frees up and really. Eliminates a certain level of risk for a potential buyer to undertake. So.
Once it's nominated and then if it's denied, it can't be nominated again.
Or a certain period of time and I'd have to check the code, but I'd wanna say it's a minimum of one year. But I'm, I'm guessing off the top of my head from when we, you all approved the ordinance two years ago. So, yeah, there's a period of time by which if it's, if it's nominated and that nomination is denied. Then you have carte blanche for the next year or whatever it is in the code to do what you will. And it, it might be more, I'd have to check.
I think we're done meeting that, so shall we move on?
Bill, thank you very much.
You bet. Thank you very much, council. It's great to see you.
Only thing left is future meeting topics.
Thank you. So we will be adding a, a resolution to support while preparing this month, this month. We are checking with Eagle County on any events that they are having that we can help promote. Uh, and then we also will be adding a discussion direction topic on short-term rentals. And the current code that we have to review.
Thank you, Jim.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Okay, second by Eric, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Don't even let me get a chance to say. I'll tell you. Okay. Have a good night, Lynn.